Subsequently flown to Norfolk General Hospital. During the flight to Norfolk, it was reported that the patient regained consciousness. It is through Officer Huntingford's timely lifesaving action that the patient was able to receive further medical care. Officer Huntingford's actions have not gone unnoticed and are in keeping with the highest standards of the Naggshead Police Department. Thank you, Matt.
And I am happy to report the patient was discharged from Norfolk. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. Tremendous work and an incredible credit to our department and to your profession. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
It would be, it is appropriate that the next item on our agenda is proclamation of Police Officers Week, May 10 through 16. And before I read that proclamation, I'd like to call on Commissioner Brinkley, who was our previous police chief.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take a minute that as we enter Police Officers Week, May 10 through the 16th, that remember one of our own that was killed on Peace Officers Memorial Day, May 15, 2009, in the early morning hours. Sergeant Earl Murray was killed in a single vehicle crash while responding to a burglary in progress. That was the first officer in the town of Naggshead that we've lost in the line of duty death, and that I wish that and hope that the members of our public and this board will continue to pray for his family, his wife, Kim, his two daughters, Sammy Jo and Paige, and they have, they have since married and have grandkids, and I know that Earl would be certainly be proud of the accomplishments that his daughters have made and certainly his pretty grandkids. So, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate that very much. This is a proclamation for National Police Week. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week, and whereas the members of Naggs, the Naggshead Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the residents and visitors of the town of Naggshead, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression, and whereas the men and women of the Naggshead Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service, and whereas we should each take the time to reflect on the ultimate sacrifice Sergeant Earl Murray, Jr., made for the town of Naggshead on May 15, 2009, and the rest of the officers that have done so nationwide, and let each of us keep their family, friends, and fellow officers in our thoughts and prayers. Now therefore, the Naggshead Board of Commissioners calls upon all citizens of the town of Naggshead and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 10 through 16, 2021, as Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their community, and in so doing have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Therefore, we do hereby proclaim the week of May 10 through 16, 2021, as Police Week, and call upon all citizens of Naggshead to observe the 15th day of May 2021 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. This the 5th day of May 2021. And a motion to adopt that resolution would be in order?
Say move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The next item on our agenda is proclamation of Outer Banks Healthcare Week, May 17 through Whereas National Hospital Week is May 9 through 15, 2021, and originated in 1921 as a community celebration and is now the nation's largest healthcare event, and whereas the Outer Banks Hospital and Medical Group call this week Healthcare Week and will celebrate the weeks of May 9 through 15 and May 17 through 21, and whereas the Outer Banks Hospital is celebrating its 19th year of serving the citizens and visitors of Dare County, and whereas the Outer Banks Hospital uses this week to celebrate all team members in the hospital and medical group as well as our community healthcare partners, and whereas the town of Naggshead recognizes the Outer Banks Hospital 2021 Healthcare Week theme of celebrating heroes who give hope, and whereas the 500-plus dedicated team members and providers work together, providing hope to patients, families, and each other with the intention of promoting wellness and providing the highest quality healthcare services, and whereas the town is honored to celebrate men and women who are working tirelessly to help others in their greatest time of need, especially during recent periods when our town and county are in the throes of the COVID-19 pandemic. Now therefore, the town of Naggshead Board of Commissioners, on behalf of all of its citizens, does hereby proclaim the weeks of May 9 through 15 and May 17 through 21 as Outer Banks Healthcare Weeks and express great appreciation for all of the dedicated people, facilities, and technologies that make reliable healthcare possible in our community. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Naggshead of North Carolina to be affixed this 5th day of May 2021. And a motion to adopt that resolution would be in order?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I will say I've had occasion in the last couple of weeks to give a number of tours of the town of Naggshead to talk about our projects and our assets as a community, and in a time when so many small communities are struggling with healthcare service and small rural hospitals are closing, the Outer Banks and Naggshead in particular are incredibly blessed to have a thriving hospital that continues to add services and specialists, and we are just, we are very fortunate. The next item on our agenda is public comment, and I will turn this over to Mr. Leidy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the board will receive comments from members of the public. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the Board of Commissioners with any matter of concern or interest that the person may have. It is not an opportunity for dialogue with individual commissioners, and the commissioners rarely respond to public comment. I will also point out that we have a number of public hearings on the agenda for today, and if your comments relate to one of those items for which we have a public hearing, you should hold your comments until we get to that actual public hearing. But for any other comments that you have, we would ask that you approach the podium, start by telling us your name and where you live, and then address your remarks to the board as a whole, and I will give you notice that we have a five-minute time limit, and I will let you know when that time is about up and when it is up. So, at this time, anybody who wishes to address the board may do so. Nobody wishes to address the board? Mr. Mayor, I don't see that we have anybody who wishes to address the board, so at this time, we will conclude the public comment session.
Okay. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, which you have before you. And a motion would be in order?
Say move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. That brings us back to public hearings again. The first public hearing is for the establishment of four proposed municipal service districts for beach erosion control, flood and hurricane protection works, and flood control and drainage projects, and I will call on Attorney John Leidy and Deputy Manager Andy Garman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we will begin the public hearing to consider the establishment of the four proposed municipal service districts for beach erosion control, flood and hurricane protection works, and flood control and drainage projects. This is a matter in which the board sits as a legislative body, so sworn testimony is not necessary, but we do have an interesting procedure here in that the board must consider this ordinance at two separate meetings. This will be the first consideration of that, and of course, that's why we're having the public hearing at this time. But we'll begin with the public hearing by receiving the staff's analysis presented by Deputy Town Manager Andy Garman.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. We have a few slides just to go through where we've been to this point, also to cover the process for creating an MSD, and to show the board that staff has followed the steps required by the North Carolina general statutes, and then finally to just talk a little bit about the report and the ordinance that was prepared for the board describing the sort of the purposes and justifications for the MSD. So just to give you a little bit of background for the public and the board, we are in the process now of still acquiring easements for future projects. For our first two projects, we had easements for 10 years, so those are set to expire or have expired, and we're in the process of acquiring new easements. We have about 430 easements that we need, so we're doing fairly well on that. We are in the process of working on a project for summer of '22. This is related to Hurricane Dorian and a FEMA project, public assistance funds that would be used for that. We have a consulting firm, Moffitt and Nickel, who's working on the design and permitting for that project, and that work is currently underway, as the board is aware. Next steps, we'll be working on a master plan that we've talked about with the board for future nourishment projects. Beyond this next project in 2022, we anticipate a project around the '27-'28 timeframe, and what we'd really like to do is have a master plan looking at sort of a 30-year horizon for nourishment work, looking at sand resources that we would be able to utilize for that period of time, sort of establishing more of a long-term plan for nourishment as opposed to a project-by-project setup. As I said, you know, the master plan will be looking at sand volumes, and so they'll be doing significant surveys offshore of barocites to look at those sand resources, and then we will also be looking at sand placement in terms of volumes along all of our beaches, including the northern section of town, which hasn't previously been nourished, but we want to analyze that and make sure we include that if it needs to be nourished in the future. So, we have some assumptions we've been working off of moving forward. You know, the projects that we're working on continue to rise in cost. The costs are anticipated to increase over time. You know, the town will continue to need additional revenue to pay for projects, and we know that there's going to be diminished external funding over time for the projects, which has already happened, as the board is aware. The first project, the county paid for a larger share of the project than they did for the second project, and so we know that we will need to pay attention to our revenue and make sure that we have enough to continue to pay for these projects. Regarding the MSDs, these can be created at any time for future purposes, provided that contracts for services are let within a year. We can create new MSDs that overlap with the existing MSDs. The MSDs must include the area where the projects are occurring, and that generally includes the oceanfront, although there is work related to drainage that has occurred, specifically with the ocean outfalls. What we're looking at here in this proposal is to create new MSDs west of South Virginia Deer Trail and South Old Oregon Inlet Road. These would raise additional revenue for future projects and sort of better align taxes with project benefits. Oceanfront properties would also be included within the proposed MSDs. So just a little background on an MSD Municipal Service District. It's a defined area within a city, town, or village in which the unit's governing body levities an additional property tax in order to provide projects or extra services that benefit the properties in that district. So what we have to do in this process is create MSDs by an ordinance, which you're conducting your first reading today. You're having the public hearing today. Prior to the public hearing, the town must prepare a report which includes a map of the districts, including the boundaries, a statement identifying the services needed in the districts, and why those services are needed to a greater extent than other parts of town, and then also a plan for providing services in the districts. Those documents have been prepared, as the board is aware. We were directed back in February to prepare those. They've been published for a while now on the town's website, and we have published the required notices in the town clerk's office. We've sent direct mailers to all the property owners in the MSDs and advertised this in a variety of ways. So generally, the ordinance takes effect at the beginning of the next fiscal year, so July 1. If this, if this MSD or these MSDs are adopted, it would take effect on July 1. It must be adopted by a majority of the board at two separate meetings, and this just sort of walks the board through the timeline of what's occurred. In February, the board directed staff to prepare the required documents. March 3, that report and those documents were presented to the board. Following that, notices were mailed to all the property owners in the districts. We also published the public hearing notice in four successive weeks in the Coastland Times, and it's been on the website since April 1, as today is the public hearing and the first reading of the ordinance, and then what would be anticipated is there would be a second reading on June 2 at the board's regular meeting. So as the board is aware, there are four proposed MSDs. District 3 would be from Bonnet Street down to essentially the Causeway area Gulf Stream, and that would encompass everything east of US 158 all the way to the ocean. District 4 would essentially be from Gulf Stream all the way to the southern end of town, encompassing all properties in that area, so basically South Naggshead. Those two districts essentially mirror our current oceanfront districts, except they extend further west. District 5 is a new area that's north of Bonnet Street, which wasn't previously included in MSD, so that District 5 would be the ocean-side area east of 12, and District 6 would be the same area but back to 158, all the way to the ocean. So this was a map of the districts that was published. So the purposes that these MSDs are being established for, as authorized by North Carolina general statutes, beach erosion control, flood and hurricane protection works, and then drainage improvements. So I just want to direct the board, which you have in front of you copies, hard copies of the ordinance, and that's what you'll be considering today as part of the public hearing, and there are several findings that are stated in the whereas statements in the ordinance, and the board will want to pay particular attention to the findings in the ordinance. Those mirror the information that was in the report that was prepared and published on the town's website. So basically, it describes the justifications, the reasons for doing this, and so the findings that have been prepared are that the projects that are being conducted for beach erosion control and flood and hurricane protection and drainage provide benefits to the properties within these districts to a greater extent than other properties in other parts of the town. And these benefits generally include the protection of roadways, which provide access, protection of utilities, including private septic systems, protection of beach accesses, flood control and drainage, and then reduced overwash. And as we've seen over time with storms even prior to nourishment, what we saw occurring was that roadways, including NC 12 and 1243 and other roads, were flooded and impassable. We've had roadways washed away. We've had properties that have become damaged well off the ocean, and after Hurricane, well, after the nourishment project in 2011, we saw a significant decrease in damage. I think you can compare Hurricane Sandy to Hurricane Isabel, and all those storms weren't exactly alike. We saw very little damage during Hurricane Sandy, which occurred about a year after nourishment, and during Isabel, we saw substantial damage. And so what we've experienced is that these projects have significantly reduced the impacts to not only the oceanfront properties, but everybody in those areas. And so that's why we included that justification in the report. Obviously, properties are assessed based on their proximity to the ocean, and these properties in the areas proposed for MSDs receive direct benefits, not just indirect benefits, but direct benefits I've just described from the result of nourishment activities. As we've mentioned, the town will continue to experience conditions that warrant beach protection efforts, and these projects will need to continue into the foreseeable future. We also have drainage projects that have been conducted, particularly with respect to ocean outfalls, and those are intended to maintain our flood and drainage system, and we will need to conduct ongoing maintenance activities of those systems and as well as improvements to those systems. So just sort of restating this, each district, this is the finding the board would want to make, each district is in need of the projects, programs, services, facilities, or functions authorized by the general statutes to a demonstrably greater extent than the remainder of the town. The town has followed the statutory requirements to establish the MSDs as stated earlier, and we also have a plan to provide services in each of the proposed districts. And that in the foreseeable future, in the near term, for the next project would largely be related to the 30-year master plan, as we mentioned in the beginning, and then following that, we'll work on design and construction of our next project. So the next steps would be a second reading on June 2 by the board, and then a vote, and then the board will want to consider public input, and essentially that's our presentation for you today.
All right. Thank you, Andy. Do any of the members of the board have questions for Mr. Garman?
I see none.
I have one. I know that most, that all the commissioners have been here since the first beach nourishment project, but there may be members of the public who are not quite as familiar with conditions as they existed prior to that first project, Andy, but I have a question. I think you touched on this, but I just want to be clear. Are you saying that the kinds of erosion and storm-related forces that impacted the beaches in Naggshead with Hurricane Sandy and subsequent storms could be compared to the storms that the town experienced before nourishment like Isabel and Norida and those kinds of things? Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
And are you saying that it does not, that it appears that the 2011 beach nourishment project provided protections to all of the properties within these new proposed districts that they would not have had but for the 2011 beach nourishment project?
Yes.
And is that, is that a basis for saying that the 2011 project has benefited these properties within these new proposed districts to an extent greater than other areas of town?
Yes.
And would it also support a conclusion that these areas of town are in greater need of these kinds of beach nourishment, hurricane and flood protection work, and drainage types of projects than other parts of town?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Andy. Any other questions from the board before I move on to any other presentations?
John, I will point out that we are adding an immediate oceanfront district as part of this process at the north end of town that was not previously nourished.
I believe that one's number five, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. And so relative to your statement, but there is consideration of nourishment drainage projects, all of the categories of proposed project being considered for that part of the town as well.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anything else, Andy, before you step down?
Nothing else.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. All right. At this time, would any member of the public care to make comment regarding these proposed new municipal service districts? Yes, sir. And again, if you'll please start by telling us who you are and where you live, and then address your comments to the board.
Good morning. My name is Bruce Nolte, N-O-L-T-E. My wife, Joanne, and I live at the 20-mile post in South Naggshead. We're full-time residents of Naggshead, and we've owned the property in which we now reside for over 30 years, so we've been around Naggshead for a while. We are strong supporters of beach nourishment. I would like to compliment and congratulate this board and your predecessors for having the courage and the leadership to go forward with beach nourishment originally when there were plenty of no-sand tax bumper stickers around Naggshead, and I know it took courage and leadership to do that, and you're to be congratulated for that. You're also to be congratulated for having made the transition from a one-time event, we're going to do beach nourishment, to a plan, a master plan, a 30-year plan that guarantees a beach for our citizens into the future, and that again is a courage and leadership event for which I thank you. We are also in agreement that municipal service districts are as good a way to finance, there are financial requirements of these things as anything. Where you draw the lines, you know, is a much more technical decision, but municipal service districts seems to us to be a fair apportionment with the notion that folks closer to the beach get a bigger benefit. All that said, there's one more point that we would like to make. It occurs to us that the town of Naggshead only has one single asset. The only asset this town has is the beach, and that beach, that beach supports every single business in our town. It supports every single job. It supports every single job in our town. And there is no one, there is no citizen, no resident of the town of Nag's Head that does not benefit from improvement to the one single asset that this town has. And so when I look at the drawings of the proposed municipal service districts, my only question to you is, what about all of the people who benefit, who do benefit? Their jobs, their livelihoods, their businesses, those brand-new police cars, the school buses, everything comes from that beach. And so therefore, we would ask you to consider the notion that all citizens benefit, and therefore, all citizens might have a financial role in paying for beach nourishment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nolte. Would anybody else care to comment? Anybody else? Yes, ma'am. If you'll approach the podium, please, so we can hear. That's okay. Just if you'll just tell us who you are when you get to the podium.
Yes, good morning. My name is Susan Callan.
Yes, she may remove her mask.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Susan Callan. I'm here with my husband, Charles Callan. We are property owners on the corner of South Memorial and East Hallowell. It would be 104 East Hallowell, and we're the property that has all the flowers. That seems to be the landmark. We're confused because, you know, we've been getting the emails and making printouts of all this information, and we're confused because we've done so much work to our property in the last three or four years since we've been owners. We've had a professional architect work with us and secure permits with the town of Nag's Head, and we're hearing through the grapevine or whatever that our property will be ripped up in the future. So many yardage or footage or whatever will be taken up because of drainage. I don't know. I mean, we're very confused and very nervous because we've put a lot into that and just want to know how, you know, as homeowners, what is down the road for us?
Ma'am, the board usually does not respond to comments, but I will do so real briefly here. I'm not sure what project you're referring to, but that's unrelated to the beach nourishment municipal service districts that this ordinance is creating.
Okay. Well, it pertains to the other.
Yeah. This is really designed to provide hurricane and flood protection works for properties such as your property, which would be mostly installed on the oceanfront and not landward, but that are designed to protect properties that are on the west side of the beach road. Maybe we have any other comments or questions for Ms. Callan? If not, all right. Thank you very much, Ms. Callan. By the way, how do you spell your last name?
K-A-L-A-N.
I'm glad I asked, because I had it written wrong. Thank you. Anybody, is there anybody else who wishes to address the Board of Commissioners on this issue?
I'm Carol Mercer with South Old Oregon Inlet Road. It's E-M-R-C-E-R. My concern with the new MSDs is that you have already done stormwater control in lots of the west side neighborhoods, and also at Seven Sisters, I believe. And with the beach nourishment projects, you're including some of the drainage issues. We haven't had any work in South Nag's Head, as far as I know. It was stated for 2020, and it was too expensive, so you just canned it. I don't want to be taxed for basic security issues. A road should be taken care of with the taxes we're already paying. And if you're doing beach nourishment that is benefiting everyone in Nag's Head, and it does, I agree, then you need to tax everyone in Nag's Head, not just people who purchased their property 20 years ago, and now we're getting these bills for extra taxes and flood control and other items. I think the MSDs are unfair the way they're laid out. And that's about it.
Thank you, Ms. Mercer. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment? Anyone at all? Does the board wish to receive any other information regarding the proposed ordinance before we conclude the public hearing? Anything at all? Any other questions for staff?
I'm going to ask a question for staff.
All right.
Andy, there is a town-wide tax that applies to beach nourishment as well.
That's correct.
And all of those rates are subject to adjustment year to year in the town's budget.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anything else? Anything else the board wishes to receive regarding this, or any other questions before we conclude the public hearing? If not, oh, I'm sorry.
Just a clarification. Some of this is for drainage projects that are related to stormwater, correct?
It could be. It could be. Again, establishing the district allows the imposition of a tax for projects and services that will be conducted within the districts. They do not have to be planned or contracted yet before the districts are established. Anything else? All right. If not, we will conclude the public hearing at this time, and the board may deliberate on the proposed ordinance.
Okay. Thank you, John. Appreciate that, and I thank all of you who spoke to us this morning on this issue, and I will make the point that this process is to establish MSDs, not to establish tax rates for MSDs. It's only to establish them for the purposes that have been indicated. And I do want to say that I appreciate the fact that town-wide, there is a tax that is applied for beach nourishment, and I happily, happily pay that tax, because as it was indicated earlier, I know that my job here and my living here depends on the beach, and I'm happy to make a contribution to the maintenance and development of that beach. So I will ask the commissioners if they have any observations or comments before we proceed to a motion. I'll start with Commissioner Fuller.
May not be directly, and I know we don't usually respond, but I may be able to respond to the Callans.
I think that would be appropriate.
And that is, y'all actually live in Old Nag's Head Place, correct? And the area that I, what's getting confused is the town is actively engaged with the Old Nag's Head Place Homeowner Association about some drainage work within the subdivision, and anything that I believe would affect our property is the rock that goes from your property line out in the right-of-way. That's where some of the drainage could occur. Now, will it occur there? I don't know, but I'm assuming you're talking about the rock that you have that goes from your property to the road. Am I right? That's correct. And that could be part of that drainage project that the town is talking about, but my assumption would be that anything that's in the right-of-way that's disturbed through any drainage project would be put back like it was. You know, it would be a culvert underneath with the rock back on top, but it definitely wouldn't go on your property. It would be within the right-of-way, which is where, you know, where the rope was, where the rope is now to the road is really right-of-way property. It's not, so it would be in that area, not where the rope is, but outside the rope.
Thank you, Commissioner. You can probably tell Commissioner Fuller walks the town fairly extensively and has a good working knowledge of all parts. I often ride my bike to Town Hall, and so I come up Hallowell, and I appreciate your flowers very much, so thank you.
And I do, too.
Mr. Brinkley.
Mayor, thank you, and I just want to thank Mr. Nolte for speaking, as well as Ms. Mercer. I could not agree with Mr. Nolte more than that everybody in the town benefits from beach nourishment. I know my job as a town employee here for 30 years was dependent upon that beach, and I do appreciate the fact that we all have skin in the game when it comes to paying taxes for our beaches. And I've personally seen the benefit of beach nourishment projects, having been in public safety prior to beach nourishment and seeing the impacts on our town from tropical systems versus after beach nourishment. So again, I appreciate you all for speaking. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Cahoon.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks again to all the speakers this morning. I appreciate all the comments and take them all very seriously. Having been involved from the 1990s about beach nourishment, it seems like it's been a major part of my life. I'm happy that we finally have gotten it to a point where we are looking at long-term projects, not just a one-and-done. I think that after previous meetings that I've been in in other areas, that what we have done and what we have successfully done here in Dare County and in Nag's Head, other communities are now starting to have to grapple with, because they have been the recipients of federal funding all these years, and all of a sudden, they've realized the spigot's dry. So they're trying to figure it out, and they were looking at all their other revenue sources, and I asked, what about MSDs? And it was kind of like a blank stare, because they were so used to other people picking up the tab. So I think what we're trying to do is provide a long-term plan. Do I think everybody in the town has an investment in the beach? Yes. We all make our living from the beach, and I'll say upfront, I know that I do, and have supported paying the extra MSDs money that we have paid over the past, what, 12 years? 10 years, 12 years, something like that. But we have also, as a board and a community, realized that we also have to have more skin in the game in areas such as South Nag's Head, because there's only one road down there, and we have seen what happens when flooding can cut off that road. Isabel was mentioned this morning. That was quite a nightmare for South Nag's Head, for everybody that lived down there, as well as other parts of the town where the flooding comes over and shuts off access. So we are trying to provide a plan that would mitigate that, as well as in other areas where we have drainage issues, try to take care of those issues as well, because there's just not enough money to do every single project, and we're trying to figure out a way to equitably pay for all those projects. So I'm going to support the MSDs. We have not set a tax rate. We have not set our tax rate for the town as a whole either, so we have a lot more work to do as we move forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Sears.
Yes. Mr. Ms. Callan, that is pretty work, especially around the pool area, so you know. But I, too, make money on this, off of the sand on the beach. I do pay the tax that they referenced, and there's not much more that I can say than what the commissioners have said. I would like to say that this MSD is the way that Nag's Head is trying to get ahead of the issue that we're seeing, and that is the county is not going to be able to fund the increasing projects that they're having. I truly believe that we need to look at a once, a previous tax, on sales tax that we had that was set up just for beach nourishment throughout the county. I think that would help, and I think that's an issue that needs to be pushed, but at this particular time, we don't have anybody on the county board that is motivated enough to push that issue. We also need to look at occupancy taxes. Our current tourism board is the largest recipient of tax money from occupancy. They don't need that much. They're buying up land. In other counties around the area, that occupancy tax is used for beach nourishment, and that would keep the citizens, us landowners, a little less on how much we have to put in the game, because overall, what the tourists are bringing in would help justify the offset in that. So I think this is just us trying to be in a position of not having to scramble last minute to come up with something, hit with some great assessment at the end to make it happen. This is us looking a little bit forward in that manner, and I think the board overall wants to continue to look forward and continue to push on the county to look at these other sources that could offset this revenue. And thank you all for coming out as well, even the ones that didn't speak. I appreciate it.
Yes. Thank you, Mike. I appreciate that you recognize the folks who didn't speak this morning as well for coming out and expressing their interest in the affairs of the town. John, is it appropriate for us to vote at both readings of this?
Yes, sir. You actually need to approve it twice for it to become effective, so it is appropriate for you all to have a motion to approve it with a second and a vote on that today.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Cahoon.
Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt an ordinance establishing and creating for Nag's Head beach erosion control and flood and hurricane protection works and drainage projects municipal service districts. I'm not going to read the whole ordinance, but I will make the last item. Now further therefore be ordained by the Board of Commissioners, Town of Nag's Head, that one, the town of Nag's Head is fully complied with each and every requirement of Chapter 160A, Article 23 of the North Carolina General Statutes, needed to define and create each of the districts defined below and determines and finds same as a fact. The Nag's Head, two, the Nag's Head beach erosion control and flood and hurricane protection works and drainage projects municipal service districts for erosion control and flood and hurricane works are hereby defined and created pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 160A-537 in accordance with the following description. District Three, encompassing all properties situated east of South Croatan Highway between Bonnet Street and Gulfstream Street slash South Virginia Dare Trail. District Four, encompassing all properties situated between Gulfstream Street slash South Virginia Dare Trail and southern town limits. District Five, encompassing all properties situated east of South Virginia Dare Trail between 8th Street and Bonnet Street. District Six, encompassing all properties situated east of the South Croatan Highway between 8th Street and Bonnet Street, and being the property as shown within the boundaries set forth on that certain map attached heretofore as Exhibit A, and incorporated herein by reference, to which reference is made for a more complete and accurate description of the boundaries of Nag's Head beach erosion control and flood and hurricane protection works and drainage projects municipal service districts as defined in the ordinance. Three, the town of Nag's Head may engage in any or all of those activities that may be lawfully be conducted within municipal service district defined and created to North Carolina General Statute Section 160A-536A1 and A3 to provide beach erosion control and flood and hurricane protection works and drainage projects. Four, the town may also levy property taxes within the service districts in addition to those throughout the town, in order to finance and provide or maintain for the districts services provided therein, in addition to or to a greater extent than those financed provided or maintained for the entire town. The effective date would be today if passed.
And Madam, Commissioner Cahoon, just to be clear, although you didn't read all the recitals, your motion is to adopt the ordinance as presented, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
One, I would like to point out that Item Four said the town may also levy property taxes within the service districts in addition to those throughout the town, so that will be a consideration as well.
Yes, it will. Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. So that the folks who were here for that item may exit the room and get on with their day, the board will be in recess for 10 minutes. The board has returned to session. The next item on our agenda is Item F2, public hearing to consider text amendments to the UDA pertaining to electric vehicle battery charging and battery exchange stations, and I will call on Howie White.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor and Ford. I'm happy to be with you this morning to share the proposed text amendments for the electric vehicle battery charging and battery exchange stations. Given the town's recent interest in installation of electric vehicle charging stations, as well as our private interests, we've determined that some text amendments were necessary to the UDO that mainly centered around terminology and where the charging facilities would be located. The Board of Commissioners did authorize staff to begin looking at that at their March 3rd meeting. Staff continued to... Staff continued to work on that and presented the proposed text amendments to the Planning Board at their March 16 meeting. Planning Board did vote to approve those, or recommend approval for those, seven to zero. I'm going to quickly highlight the changes that are proposed in the text amendment. These are outlined in both the memo as well as the adoption ordinance. The first change is to Section 6.53. We're going to remove electric vehicle charging stations, as well as battery exchange stations. As principal uses, one, the battery exchange station would just be listed under commercial. The second change that will be needed is to delete, again, the battery charging and exchange station from the Table 6.6, Table of Uses and Activities, and reinsert the language "electric vehicle charging station", and that would be in all districts as an accessory use. We also need to go back in and add "electric vehicle battery exchange station" as a permitted accessory use in the C2 district. The last major change that needs to happen is in our supplemental regulations, which is in Section 7.17, and that is marked up in the memo itself. Mainly, we need to reiterate again in the first part that this is an accessory to single-family residential. We're going to modify the standards that are needed for commercial and institutional uses. Specifically, we're looking at not allowing electric vehicle to be more than forty percent of the total available parking spaces. And if you use electric vehicle, then you can't reserve those spaces for EV. And if you're doing that, that they're not used to meet the minimum required parking for the use in the site. And again, we are going to have those, want to make sure that those spaces are assigned. There were a few amendments that needed to happen to the definitions. Again, mainly with terminology and wording here, not really the definition of itself, and those will be changed in Appendix A, and they are noted, again, in the memo as well as in the adoption ordinance. We've provided the adoption ordinance for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Howie, I have a question. This just occurred to me. I could have looked this up myself if I thought of it, but I just thought of it, and that is the number of accessory uses permitted on a property. So if I'm in a residential district, I have a storage shed, I want to add a charging station as a second accessory use, is that permitted?
I believe that will be permitted. It would not be restricted.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Commissioner Cahoon.
I have a question. You talked about a battery exchange station was not in, was only allowed in a C2.
Right.
But looking at the definition of battery exchange station, it talks about a drive lane, fully exchanged with an automated process. Do we have anything like that in the town?
We currently don't, but this would allow for that.
But it wouldn't be allowed except in C2.
That is correct, is what we're proposing.
Yeah, that's more like a service station process.
Well, that's what I thought.
Looks and feels more like a service station.
Right, and this would be as an accessory, not as a principal use, but an accessory to a commercial facility, like a garage or service station.
Okay.
Commissioner Fuller.
Three things. Just, in what I saw, and this is a broad question. I didn't see anywhere where this counted as lot coverage. Does it count as lot coverage? And where in here does it show that it counts toward lot coverage?
The equipment, the footprint of the equipment? Because this equipment, I think, would be signed and be installed in front of a regular parking space. Is that what you're?
That's not my question.
Okay.
My question is, we allow a certain amount of lot coverage. And this would be, would this be considered lot coverage or not lot coverage?
The foot, I'm asking the footprint of the equipment.
Or, well, it says in here the same size as like a HVAC outside unit. So as far as I'm concerned, an HVAC side unit can be ten by ten.
Right.
So the question is, is it lot coverage or not lot coverage?
Yes, it would be counted.
So you'd have to recalc, anybody that does this, you'd have to recalc all the lot coverage for the lot, or the person that installs this would have to give you a new survey showing new lot coverage?
Whatever documentation is currently, right, as the director's saying, unless it's over our existing already. Like, if you've already exceeded your lot.
So if you're over lot coverage, you can't put it in anyway? Okay, the second thing is, I don't see anything in here that prohibits a residential installation from providing a commercial service.
It's accessory to the single-family unit itself.
So, okay, and then, so it can't, the answer is, they can't provide a commercial use?
I think building code and the electrical code may dictate that, more so than our zoning.
All I want to know is a yes or no answer. Can this be used commercially? Yes or no?
No.
Okay, and our zoning code restricts that, or our UDO restricts that, correct?
Believe the language that's contained in here does, yes.
Okay, and then the only specific thing I have is 7.17.1. The second sentence is just gratuitous, and it needs to be struck as far as I'm concerned, because it doesn't say anything. And that is, "The use of such stations shall be limited to the occupants of a dwelling and the guests thereof." Well, obviously, it can't be used for anything but the guest. I mean, it can't be used anything but for the owners and their guests, anyway. So it's just a gratuitous statement.
Okay. Commissioner Brinkley.
I don't have anything there. Thank you.
Commissioner Cahoon, do you have anything further?
I have a question, a clarification on page five of seven of the memo, and it's about maybe a third of the way down where it starts in red. Electric vehicle battery, batteries, exchange station means a da-da-da. As you go down through, it says, "The depleted battery batteries in electric vehicles." Is that a correct terminology? The depleted battery batteries in electric vehicles, will a fully charged battery? It didn't, it just didn't seem to flow right when it says.
Commissioner Cahoon, I noticed that as well. I think it's a typo, and it's in Part Four of the ordinance itself, in the ordinance language. On page three of four, Part Four, the second paragraph, where on the fourth line, it says, "Exchange the depleted battery", and then it adds "batteries in electric vehicles". So I think the depleted battery phrase is surplus language that should be stricken. I think it's the same thing you were pointing out.
Tell me again, John, where you saw it, and I was looking at the narrative.
Yeah, I, well, I did that, and then I went and found it in the ordinance, because I figured we'd want to strike that if you're going to consider adopting it.
Okay, yeah, it's in Part Six, under, same Part Six again, under definitions.
I'm sorry, Part Six, not Part Four. I got my Roman numerals wrong.
Backup paragraph.
We can strike that language.
Yeah.
That was all I had.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sears?
Nothing, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions for staff at this point? Hearing none. Can I ask Commissioner Fuller, your comment about the sentence that was gratuitous, was that within the ordinance? Can you go back to that section?
It was in 7.17.1, second sentence.
Oh, you have the second sentence.
Thank you. All right, then I believe we've heard a potential modification and a correction, a potential strike and a correction to the ordinance. And so if there are no further questions or discussion, then I believe a motion might be.
I'm sorry, this is a public hearing, so we need to allow for comments from the public. I don't know that we have anybody.
Excuse me, thank you. John?
Yes, do we have any, anyone from the public who wishes to comment? I don't see anybody here to do so, so we can, unless the board wishes to receive any other information about this, we can conclude the public hearing at this time.
Very good, thank you. Appreciate that. So back to my statement, I heard a strike and a correction, and I've heard no other discussion, so a motion would be in order, and then perhaps further discussion.
Mayor, if it's broken, I'll make a motion that we approve this as presented, with the exception of 7.17.1, second sentence. "The use of such stations shall be limited to the occupants of a dwelling and the guests thereof", that sentence should be struck. And then the typo that we saw earlier, that that be corrected as well. I'll make that part of our motion.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I mean, do we have, just, I'm asking the same question, but I want to nod. We have made sure that this counts against lot coverage, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, there's no reason why it would not.
Okay, I agree.
You know, if it is on existing cover, if there's an existing pad that they can place it on, certainly. But if it's a new pad, it would count as lot coverage.
Okay, and then the other is that in the residential zone, we're sure, as the ordinance is right now, that these cannot be used commercially.
Yeah, so I drafted the language at least with respect to the single-family residences and duplexes, and it was intentionally a little redundant. Sorry, I'm trying to get to where it is. It does say, "As an accessory use", so it's only allowed as an accessory use to the single-family and duplexes, and I'm not in the right section, sorry. "As an accessory use to single-family and two-family", and to clarify, "The use of such stations shall be limited to the occupants of a dwelling and the guests thereof", it's belt and suspenders, but sometimes that's necessary to be completely clear to someone who's being regulated under this. That was the intent.
Thank you, and my recollection of the UDO is that where "Commercial" to the extent that it's permitted in residential districts, like for home occupations, is listed. If this use is not listed, then it's not permitted for a commercial purpose in that place.
So if somebody has a home occupation, let's say they're just an electrical contractor, would they be able to use this or not?
No, because their office would count as the commercial use, and that would be permitted as a home occupation. But charging vehicles is not in that list, so you would not be able to do that. I mean, that's the way I would read the ordinance, and I'll let Michael speak to that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe the ordinance, the amendments, would allow for someone who had a home occupation to invite people onto their property as a commercial enterprise to charge vehicles. But if they happen to have a customer for their business that is not charging of electric vehicles come to their property, certainly I would think that they're, you know, if that customer happened to drive an electric vehicle, they could charge their vehicle if they had a charger. But they couldn't conduct a business of charging vehicles, and I think there's a distinction there. I mean, it'd be like anyone that, if I am visiting my friend, and they have a vehicle charger at their house, and I drive an electric vehicle and I go to their house, can I plug in short?
Have you seen a charger at any residential property ever?
Yeah, actually, there are. The thing about this is, is that anyone can charge at their house now with a conventional electric system.
Correct.
Yeah.
A commercial charger you've seen in somebody's house?
I've not personally seen, but I know that there are vehicle chargers that are commercially rated, you know, with the plug in Naggs Head, absolutely.
You're talking to Tesla chargers?
No. Well, probably. There probably are. But I think what you're, what you're calling a commercial charger doesn't necessarily mean that it's a standalone platform system. It could be where someone has taken the time to actually have a charger installed, a specific charger, rather than just using an extension cord.
So commercial charging is for profit?
Say that again. Not always, no, no. A commercial-rated charger would not necessarily be a commercial enterprise.
My point is, why would I spend thousands of dollars to put a charger, and if you're talking freestanding, commercial-rated charger, in my residential property when the cars today can be hooked up through a regular plug, through a regular electrician, that I don't need any of that extra lot coverage or anything else for?
Right, you may not need lot coverage. So commercial-rated chargers that it discusses here, they can be installed inside a garage against a wall. It's not as though they're standalone. But the reason you would want to do that is because you can charge your vehicle much faster than you can through a standard extension cord and converted plug. So that's why a resident may want to do that.
So in that particular case, if we look at residential's with commercial chargers having to be required to have a fire suppression system put on their property, because at that point, you're talking about the heat coming from that charger that increases that speed, that's the reason that Harris Teeter, they're sitting outside a certain amount of space apart. So have we looked at it from that angle?
No, I don't believe any of that is accurate. I think that the reason they're outside is because that's where the parking lot is, and that's where vehicles are parked. But in any case.
You've studied that?
I've read about it, absolutely. I mean, there are vehicle chargers that you can install inside a garage, and they're rated to be installed inside a garage under the building, in building code. I mean, they wouldn't be in there if they didn't get a permit and weren't properly rated for that.
I just don't want an ordinance to create a liability for the town because of the ordinance not being written correctly.
I defer to the town attorney, but I don't believe that that's the case here. I mean, this ordinance does not presume that someone is going to be installing something that is in violation of the building code.
I agree. I think the building code is the fallback for protecting the town from any potential liability for allowing someone to install a commercial-grade charger in a residential use.
Right.
So would that be allowed, a commercial-grade charger in a residential use, under the building code?
I think, I think there's a lot of semantics here, and I think just because it is a commercial-rated or commercial-grade charger does not mean that it's not appropriate in a residential application. And I think, maybe there's something I can clarify for the board here with respect to that, but I think just because it's a commercial-grade charger does not mean that it's a standalone charger in a parking lot. But it also doesn't mean that that type of charger could not be procured by someone to install in a residential application.
No questions?
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Board? We have a motion and a second on the floor. So it's appropriate to vote unless anybody has anything else. All those in favor of the ordinance as amended signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Could I ask the attorney a question for clarification? John, on every thing that we've had today, and we've had it forever, at the beginning of every use that we talk about, we have to have, subject to UDO provisions, we have this long diatribe, 3.5.3 and 3.5.4, one for the Planning Board, one for the Board of Commissioners. Is that necessary in every document that we get?
You mean in the, I'm sorry. You mean in the, I'm sorry, are you talking in the narrative or in the, in the structure of the-
Well, it was under the, um, let's see.
Yeah, point me, if you could point me to a page.
It was under seven point one, seven point two, on page four, excuse me, it starts on page five, and goes on down to page, and actually page five of seven and page six of seven. With regard to the board of commissioners' review and action, staff recommends consideration in the following UDO provision. Is that necessary to have? It takes awful lot of reading, and it's in every single item that we have considering today.
I think the, that's the, you know, that's a portion of the staff report regarding the proposed UDO amendment. I think it's just provided for, I think it's provided for clarity and to helping people understand when they read the ordinance, what the purpose of each particular portion of the ordinance is. I think it's really up to the board to decide how you want these, this kind of information presented, how you want the ord- proposed ordinances presented, what kind of backup information would be helpful. It's certainly not legally required for purposes of this kind of hearing, but I think the, the strategy is to provide as much information as possible about the reasons for doing these things and specific references to where in the existing code things are either covered or how they supplement the existing code.
Okay, I just found it to be extraneous and creates a whole lot more work and wordy when it's on every single thing, and we all should know what the actions of the planning board are, and we all should know what the actions of the board of commissioners are, because we're taking action. But I just think it's, just lengthens the process by which we do our work.
Thank you.
So I would say, let's not have it on every single item that we get.
It's not required.
And it's just wordy. We know what the, the planning board takes actions on every single thing before we get it, and we take actions on items that come before us.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing, item three A. Consideration of a low-impact development and stormwater reference manual and amendment of recommended standard details. David?
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. This is going to be presented in three parts. Part A is going to be two separate parts, and that's going to be the consideration for adoption of the second edition of the Low Impact Development Manual and Stormwater Reference Manual, along with consideration of adoption of amendments to the Recommended Standard Details Manual. The second part, which is, part B, will be the public hearing, which will be request for consideration of text amendments to the unified development ordinance for the manual references. So to start off with, the Low Impact Development Manual and Stormwater Reference Manual is a new and improved, single-source document for stormwater management background approaches and practices here within the town of Nagshead. This is the second edition of the manual, which has been created in partnership with the Coastal Federation. There's just a couple of highlights that I wanted to note. This version is graphically enhanced and more user-friendly than the prior version. It provides expanded information on the purpose and background, as well as impacts of development and the principles of low-impact development, and how they can be employed here within the town of Nagshead. It encompasses both residential and commercial development and stormwater management approaches, which can be employed at various scales of development. And the residential section of the document has individual fact sheets for stormwater control measures that can be used singly or as multiple control measures to assist contractors and property owners during the planning development process. I just want to take note that the residential section of the LID manual was previously contained within section 500 of the Recommended Standard Details Manual. That section has been removed and is now placed within the LID manual, so we have a single-source document for all things stormwater management. And so this, this exchange of information is the primary reason why both manuals are being presented to you today. We would like to go ahead and thank the Coastal Federation for their continued partnership and assistance in the development of this manual, as well as staff. And a special thank you to Kate Jones for her help in preparing this documentation. So just in summary, we are requesting three separate motions. Under this particular section of, section A, we are requesting the adoption of the second edition of the Low Impact Development Manual and Stormwater Reference Manual, as well as the adoption of the amendments to the Standard Recommended Details Manual, which extracts section 500 and inserts it into the LID manual. So I'll be glad to take any questions that you may have.
Board, I'll start at the other end this time, Commissioner Sears.
I have nothing for-
Commissioner Cahoon.
I can't find it in here. I noticed we had a new definition for comprehensive plan in here. And is this a comprehensive plan, or is this part of the UDO?
This is separate and apart from the UDO, but it's going to be incorporated by reference within the UDO.
So this is called a comprehensive plan by reference as low-impact development?
Yes.
Okay, and the other question I would have, it's quite detailed, and it's also, looks like there's some cut and paste done, because it referenced, if I'm not mistaken, let's see. It talked about pastures and meadows as part of the, may not be your part, David, it may be the other part. But I question some of the relevance in, of the information that's in here. When we talk about pastures and meadows, I don't think we have any of those in Nagshead. So that, is that a cut and paste from the state, by adopting the state document? Or are you adopting everything that's in here?
I, I believe that that is contained within the LID manual, and I, I think that was a general statement to cover, you know, different types of land cover that you may come across, you know, as part of site planning process. So it may not be applicable to most properties here within the town of Nagshead.
I don't know of any commercial properties, but there are in Nagshead woods, there's a couple of pastures and meadows.
Well, yes, but not for low-impact development.
Correct, that's correct.
And the other question I would have is that it talked in the manual about things such as concrete grid pavers being installed, and it talked about the need for annual maintenance. Is there anything in here to provide for annual maintenance, or is that just a statement?
I think it's covered within the individual fact sheet that we have about maintenance for concrete grid pavers, which goes by the trade name of turf stone, as well as other permeable pavers, and talks about the need for maintenance procedures that are necessary to keep them operational.
And the last thing I had is, you thanked a lot of people, and there's a list in here. I noticed two names missing from the list. Whenever we, whenever we do a list of names, I did not see, it talked about some of the former boards. It did not mention former Ratzenberger, who was part of this. And it didn't mention, thank you, Commissioner Brinkley, who's sitting up here on the list, on the table as well. It mentions pretty much everybody else, but it left out those two.
We will be glad to go ahead and insert those names in. Thank you for pointing that out.
And I just, my only comment, oh, the last thing I'd, how many meetings did we have with stakeholders to discuss these issues as, to get their input?
For this second edition, I, I know that there were several informal meetings that were conducted with the Coastal Federation, but as far as the general public, I, I don't believe that we had any meetings to, to get their input.
So we didn't have any meetings with home builders to discuss issues that they had with the previous one and try to work out, insert some of those issues into this one?
Not, not to the best of my knowledge, no.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have a, a follow-up, and it's, it's not, I, I'm, just because I'm curious, it's not relative to this document in particular. The enforcement for maintenance of porous pavement is really only embodied in the maintenance agreement that the property developer executes. What is our, what is our mechanism? I mean, I know when you, when you have a stormwater management plan for your property, and like for swales, you sign a maintenance agreement for those. Is there any, is that the mechanism for enforcement of that maintenance?
It's typically complaint-driven. Based upon the current UDO, there is not a formal requirement for operation and maintenance agreement from the residential scale. For the commercial scale, yes, there is. But that is typically complaint-driven. The state, if, if there is a state permit that has been acquired for a commercial development, there may be some additional conditions that require them to have a greater level of operation and maintenance above and beyond what we have noted within this manual.
Thank you. Commissioner Brinkley.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dave, for your presentation. Commissioner Cahoon asked one of the two questions that I have, and I find it very odd that we would not involve home builders that have, have to comply with this to get their experience with the process. And I'm talking about contractors, contractors that build houses in the town of Nagshead, about what their opinion is of the first edition before we develop a second edition. I think we're doing a disservice to the people that build in the town of Nagshead by not involving them. We thank the Coastal Federation, let's thank the contractors and get them involved as well. Second, several times, at least twice I can find, staff members will meet with you on site and assist with this process, talking about the different ways that you can do things. Is there ever an occasion where a staff member would be told that they're assisting someone too much?
I'm going to have to defer to Kate Jones, you know, to get, or, or Michael, to get their opinion on, on that, since they-
Just, just curious that if, you know, because we are, we are public servants. We're there to help, and I appreciate that statement, being in there. I'm just wondering if there's ever an occasion where they're told, look, you're, you're spending too much time with this person, you need to back off.
In, in my time here and working with Kate, that's never been a direction to Kate from me, no.
Would that be with anybody else that's involved with this process, not just Kate?
It, it's not been to this point, no, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fuller?
I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. David, is there a, a deadline on this adoption?
There is not.
Thank you. Commissioners? You heard that there would be two motions required. One is to adopt the second edition, the other is to adopt the amendment to the Standard Details Manual. I did hear from two commissioners concern about stakeholder participation. There's not a deadline, so I'm wondering if, I know that that work has been completed, so I'm reluctant to open this door, but I'm not, I'm not opposed to opening the door. Is there any consideration that the board would wish to see at least one stakeholder session before we adopt this?
There is on my part. I think that it's better to get the information upfront before we adopt something, and then find out we've got issues, and go back and start making amendments after the fact. But I think it'd be better to hear, get some public input from the organizations that are going to have to be dealing with this manual.
If, if, if I can add, these practices, we are not proposing new practices. These practices have been in place since 2019, since UDO was adopted. So basically, what we're doing is we're transferring from one location to the other. And, and so if we did meet with the home builders, it would be to discuss practices that have already been in place.
And I think that's the ones that we've had a lot of complaints about.
If I may add, so back last January at the board's retreat, the board had asked us to do a review of the residential stormwater regulations with the planning board, which we completed, I believe, in August or September. And staff has presented it back to you to decide whether the board wishes to have a workshop. The planning board asked to be engaged in that workshop as well. That may or may not touch on a lot of these questions that you have, and I think some of those recommendations are responsive to concerns or ideas that we have heard from the home builders. So I think that does, that, that discussion with this board, with the planning board, we'd be happy to include the, the home builders in that discussion as well. But I think what David indicated, this is not a correction or change in practices that have been in place since, I believe, November, December of 2018, which, and, and we actually had a meeting last week with Duke Garrity, and where we discussed the residential stormwater regulations. And I believe it's a fair point to say that he acknowledged that there have been fewer issues under the amended regulations, that a lot of the concerns he was raising were with respect to the regulations as they were prior to the amendments in November, December of 2018.
And we're hearing, and I respectfully disagree with the comments that we've been getting from home builders that have encountered a lot of issues, such as being told to measure your rocks. If they're three and a half inches, you got to throw them out, because they only can be three. So I think we would like to, or, I'm not speaking, I would like to have more input with a wider cross-section of the community, the building community.
Yeah, and we'd be happy to that workshop with-
And I appreciate you being involved, and, you know, that, that y'all reached out, or did reach out to y'all that you're involved, him. I too would just ask that people that are actively engaged in building in the town of Nagshead on a regular basis be, be, be involved. And again, if, if nothing's changed, then maybe the builders are going to say it's the best thing in the world. Don't change anything, stamp the second edition on it, and let's send it on its way. But if we get some input that may allow us to make some changes, I, I don't know why we wouldn't do it. And I understand nothing's changed, you know, really, it's just a continuation. But why don't we look to see what's, maybe what issues they've been since 2019? And that would just be my opinion.
Yeah, and, and I apologize again, the, the staff, staff has always been, you know, open to a workshop with the board to discuss that, and, and anybody that wants to participate in it, so, yeah.
Before I go to Commissioner Fuller, I want to ask John-
Yes, sir.
Because I'm about to forget again, we are in a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
We, we do need to consider whether there's public comment. I don't see anybody there or here. But, but I'll also say, with regard to the current conversation, there's nobody here, so-
That's true.
Commissioner Fuller?
Am I being asked to say something?
Yes.
About what?
Well, about the, uh, uh-
I mean, I've already, well, you've already recognized me, and I said I don't have any comment.
I'm sorry.
So I didn't know if I was being asked something else.
You did, I apologize. You did do that, and I forgot I had done that.
Okay.
So I, I'll, I'll ask the board then that a motion would be in order. I think that's where I was, and consideration of whether you'd rather have some kind of additional input to this, or consider whether you would table this until a workshop was held.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think the motion to table the public, I'm sorry, to continue the public hearing for some period of time to allow some further development and discussion with these stakeholders that you are discussing, would be an appropriate motion. That'd be one way of accomplishing it.
Okay, thank you. In that case, I'll say a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to that affect the purposes of discussion.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second that your motion was to table or to continue.
Or continue, I think the attorney said.
To continue the public hearing.
Is there a time specific?
Yeah, I, I would, I would, it doesn't have to be for a time specific. It should not exceed 90 days, but you don't have to have a specific day and time.
What would be an ample opportunity, if this motion is passed, to allow staff and maybe us to get together? Sixty days?
Sixty, I would think that would be appropriate.
Would it be continued to our July board meeting? The first meeting in July?
I would think so, yeah.
I will second that.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing for 60 days. That would be to our first meeting in July. That would be to our first meeting in July, scheduled meeting in July. So any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I'll ask the board, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Um, and then, so the next item, um, which would be, I'm sorry?
You would continue that also?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll table the next item considering we're gonna continue the public hearing, which was the adoption of the amendments.
Is this contingent on that?
Do we need to do this separately, or?
You should, yes, sir. Because you have, since you have a, a public hearing scheduled on that item, you should go ahead and do this, take the same action.
Okay, all right, then a motion would be in order?
Is this, is this, Kate, for the standards details manual?
So this, this was to update the references in, in the two new adopted manuals to be consistent in the U D O.
My motion would reflect that also be continued to the July, first meeting in July.
Okay. All right, thank you. A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you. Then the next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider text amendments to the U D O to update references for stormwater fill, et cetera. Kelly? Kelly, were you coming to address that?
Um, I was actually gonna take care of 160D.
Oh, that's-
That's-
That's what Kate just said.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we're, we're down to four now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Um, thank you. Then, yes, Kelly, you're up for item four. Public hearing to consider text amendments to the U D O as required by general statute 160D.
Great, thank you so much. It's a huge document, it's gonna take a little bit to load, so I apologize. To the fact that it's a huge document, I do want to go ahead and say that even though it's a public hearing and we've provided this, we know it's an extreme amount of information. So we're not looking for you to actually vote on this today unless you want to. We can wait until June. So if between today and our next meeting you're looking at this and you have questions, just please reach out, because it's a lot to digest. But as you had said, it is a public hearing to consider updates to the U D O as required by North Carolina general statutes, um, 160D, let's see if I can make this a little bigger. Okay, there we go. So this has been a pretty long process. It started in 2014 when the North Carolina Bar Association initiated this effort to modernize the state's enabling statutes for planning and development regulations. It, it has been through review by many agencies, finally got signed by the governor in July of 2019, and at that time, local municipalities were required to adopt these provisions into their codes initially January 1st, but because of COVID, they, they bumped it to July. So essentially, we need to have our codes, our U D O reflect these changes before July 1. And generally, the changes are pretty straightforward, there's nothing too big to consider, with the exception of two items that I wanted to pull out and talk about separately. The first one, and this isn't really big, it's just gonna probably take staff and everybody to get used to. In order to have the state of North Carolina using consistent language, we're shifting from terms conditional use, conditional zoning, to special use. So all of our C U Ps are now gonna be S U Ps, and we just have to use that terminology. The process and the procedure will be the same as it always has been, we're just gonna have different terminology. The second item that I wanted to bring to your attention is 160D dash 910 states that a local government may not adopt or enforce zoning regulations or other provisions which have the effect of excluding manufactured homes from the zoning jurisdiction or that exclude manufactured homes based on the age of the home. And we currently, our current zoning ordinance has mobile home and manufactured home listed as prohibited uses. So we're not gonna be able to do that for the time being. What we have done is removed manufactured homes from prohibited uses and allowed them within the C3 district, the commercial services district. That will achieve compliance, whether that's the, the final phase of this or we look at it again later, and I imagine that we will. But for right now, to go ahead and have compliance, that's, that's what we've proposed. There's some other items that just happen consistently throughout all the sections. That is, any reference to 160A or 153A has now been converted to the appropriate 160D statute number. And again, we've replaced conditional use with special use, and there was a pretty significant amount of definitions included in 160D. And so I'll just note that one of the things that, that we were asked to do is to use the terminology two-family instead of duplex. So wherever we said duplex, we've now changed that to two-family. So I've listed each section and the primary changes. I, I won't go through them all, like I said, it's, it's pretty cumbersome. But I did list the definitions that are entirely new definitions versus definitions that were already existing in the code, but we had to make some tweaks to it for consistency. And just to highlight dwelling two-family, that's a new definition replacing the definition for duplex. And again, they were each attachments, but Articles 1 through Article 11, all the articles had some changes. Oops, sorry, Article 11 did not, but all the other ones did. And I've outlined that. In addition, you were given a, the School of Government 160D checklist, kind of a cheat sheet to go through and just make sure that you've, you've touched all the high points. Next, for policy considerations, our comprehensive plan doesn't necessarily address adoption of amendments, but it, it does mention something in there about maintaining well-run and efficient government that provides high-quality, cost-effective services. And, you know, we would just say having the most recent, consistent, up-to-date language would be a, a step in that direction for sure. Staff recommendation, like I said at this point, is just that the board, obviously if you have any questions today, we're happy to answer, but to just make note of any questions that you have along the way, and hopefully we can get this adopted at the board's June 2nd meeting so that it's in place by July 1. At their April 20th meeting, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend adoption of the amendments that have been presented. From staff perspective, I'll go ahead and, and say, I, I think this was a pretty comprehensive review, but I also think that you're probably gonna see me in front of you one or two more times where we missed something. But happy to answer any questions that you have today. And I hope I can answer them.
Okay, I, I had one question. I did make it through all of the red items, so-
Okay.
Uh, there is a provision in there about overhead power lines that where I think in, in most cases with redevelopment of a property where a line was being relocated, we would require that they put them underground. We seem to be restricted from doing that. I don't know if that's a new constraint on our ability or not.
So, um, and I can actually, I'll try to find that language for you. My recollection of that was, we can still require for the development itself for the utilities to be underground, but we cannot require that anything surrounding or leading to-
Okay.
Also be encumbered. Let me figure out which section that that might be in.
It's in 10.70.2.
Okay.
And that's required by 160D dash 804.
Probably be easier. Okay. So I think this is the language. Um, the installation of electric power cable television telephone, except that with respect to electrical power lines, such line shall not be required to be buried if they meet all, the power lines existing above ground at the time of the first approval.
That, that's the provision I was asking.
Okay, yeah. So here's an interesting thing. What's listed as part of your checklist isn't always necessarily what the actual language said.
Okay.
So I can-
Dispatch.
Okay, so- The regulation shall not require a developer or builder to bury power lines meeting all of the following criteria. The power lines existed above ground at the time of the first approval of a plat or development plan by the local government, whether or not the power lines are subsequently relocated during construction of the subdivision or development. The power lines are located outside of the boundaries of the parcel of land that contains the subdivision or the property covered by the development plan.
That's statute.
Okay, so that's directly out of the new 160D language, so, um-
Okay.
You are correct. Your interpretation of that is correct.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I, I apologize, if you're, if you're going through here and you're looking at this checklist, it makes it seem very concise and straightforward, and then when you get into the, the actual statute, it's very much not.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Fuller?
Um, two questions about definitions. The first is administrative decision. Um, the way I read that, there cannot be any judgment in the decision at all. All the decisions have to be based entirely in fact, and not that I disagree with that, I'm just asking if that's what you mean.
That, that was the, um, that was the new language that was provided, that is what we mentioned.
So, so, I mean, that means that no officer of the town can make a decision unless they can make the decision based only on fact. There can't be any judgment or interpretive decisions.
Here we go, sorry. Um, that, that is how I've read that, and I believe that's also how the planning director has read that and what has been required by the new legislation, so yes.
I mean, the active word is ministerial duties, and that being ministerial duties doesn't allow for a judgment call. So-
Right.
That's what you mean, okay?
Yes.
And then the other is, there's a change in the definition of building, and I kinda like the old definition of what a building is.
So the added language there, building means any structure used or intended for supporting or sheltering any use or occupancy.
So my point is, somebody could come in and say, I'm building the structure, but I'm not gonna inhabit it or use it for anything, so that's not a building.
Um, I don't wanna speak out of turn, and maybe the attorney can help me here, but this might be an opportunity to include the, the necessary language for 160D, but also incorporate some of our previous language just to sort of refine. I'll, I'll let John-
I think, I think the, the original definition was pretty clear.
Yes, I, I, I don't disagree with you. This language does need to be in there for us to be compliant, but I don't know that we're restricted from adding additional language to, to make it more of what the town desires.
I, I, I would add back some additional language because, I mean, honestly, somebody could just come in and say, I'm not building a building, it's a structure, I'm not gonna use it, um, and I'm not gonna shelter anything.
Understood.
I'd have to, I agree, that, that's, I think that's a substantive change and, and more narrowed interpretation of what it constitutes a building. And I'd have to, I'd have to review this in some more detail to determine whether you can keep the original language as well as a, as an expansion of that statutory definition, and I'll be glad to do that.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, my observation on that, I, I'd like to see us have, have both parts, I'm in agreement with that.
That's what I'm thinking.
The shade structure at the event site meets the new red definition, but didn't meet our original definition. But that clearly is intended for sheltering people in an assembly occupancy, and the code regulates it, and it has to be designed and sealed and has to have all of those, meet, meet all of those code requirements, but it didn't have any walls. And, um, so I, if possible, it would be nice to see both. Excuse me, so I skipped over you, Kevin.
That's good, thank you for your time. It's a lot of information, and we'll, I for one, will appreciate the extra time to make sure that we get through it, but thank you.
Commissioner Kahoon?
Thank you, Kelly. I've read the, this was quite a document to read through with all the definitions. And there's one that's in here that was in our previous discussion of the low-impact development manual. Were we forced to add a lot of these terms, such as bona fide farm purposes? I mean-
We, we were, and it's my understanding that even if it's not a use that we have or that we would allow, or a, you know, we don't necessarily have property available for bona fide farming purposes, it still has to be included.
And the other question I have, and this is one that, we just adopted an ordinance for the MSDs that specifically referenced 160A. Does that mean everything that we've referenced with 160A is automatically gonna go to 160D? Or should we be adopting items that say 160D such as today and in the future?
F?
This relates to planning and zoning. The MSD, 160A will continue to exist.
Okay.
There are other components of 160A such as the personnel components, the MSD components, there are various other things like that that will still exist and you'll still use 160A references for, but everything else regarding, uh, planning, zoning, nuisances, those kinds of things will be in this chapter now.
So it would just automatically convert?
It will automatically convert, and that reminds me of something that I wanted to mention to you is, um, another reason to wait until June to adopt this is we have a handful, maybe three or four, text amendments that have been recently approved in the past couple months that we need to insert into this and change to the 160D language as well.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Seale.
Thank you for your work, Kelly. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. John, I remind myself once again, we are in a public hearing. I see no one here to speak to this.
That's correct, so you can conclude the public hearing at this point and begin your deliberations.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so what I heard from, from Kelly is that it would be appropriate that this public hearing be continued? Um, is that correct, John?
It's, it's appropriate, it's not required. If you're prepared to take action, you can, but I think what Kelly pointed out was that it's not required to be implemented until July 1, so you still have an opportunity for further consideration and action at the June meeting if you'd like.
All right, so I will leave that up to the board members as to whether you wish to have additional time, in which case you would continue this public hearing if you believe you're ready to act on- um, in which case you would continue this public hearing. If you believe you're ready to act on the adoption, then a motion to that order would be in effect.
Commissioner Seer.
Question for Kelly. Is it necessary to wait this extra month so that the text amendments can be made to those other items that you mentioned?
I don't necessarily believe so. Um, I just think this board would have to be comfortable knowing that we will insert those text amendments in and, um, convert the necessary one sixty A references to one sixty D.
Thank you. Then a motion? Kate, Commissioner Brinkley?
I for one would appreciate the, the extra time. We've had our presentations, if we did, uh, continue it to our June meeting, I think it would be a very short item unless we, through our further review, we had additional questions. So for the purposes of, of discussion, I will, uh, make a motion that we continue the public hearing to consider various text amendments to update the Unified Development Ordinance as required by NCGS Chapter one sixty D to our first meeting in June.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just, does, does that include adding back some additional language on buildings?
I'll report back on that item by the, by the June meeting.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Hearing none, and having a motion properly seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda, item G, reports and recommendations from the planning board and the director. Michael?
Thank you. Uh, bear with me one second. So a few things in my director's report I wanted to call your attention to, and I'm happy to expand on anything if the board has any questions. Uh, one thing that's not referenced in here, and I know members had maybe some questions about it. We have, uh, we are extending, um, and have extended and have renewed, uh, temporary use permits for a lot of the restaurants uh, that have held them previously or continue to hold those for outside seating and modified seating arrangements. Um, all of the ones that I have issued, um, currently have an expiration date of June one. Um, and most of them, I believe, have been made aware that, like they have the entire time, we would, uh, contend, consider extension of those if we're still under a declared state of emergency. And if it happens that, uh, the declared state of emergency is ended or will be ending, uh, that we'll work with them to, uh, transition back to normal operations. And I believe we have six or seven of those that are active at this time.
May I make a comment on that?
Sure.
At this time? I was gonna do it during the commissioner's comment. I've gotten a lot of response from that, and I think it was the board's wish back in January or February not to remove any of that seating ordinance under those proclamations until the end of the season. We're having a hard time finding work, labor. Every single night said restaurant is closed at least two days a week. We don't need to add extra burden to any of those folks at this particular time or shy into business operations for any of these businesses.
So I, I don't recall, I recall that slightly. I think what the direction was is that we didn't want to amend the regulations at that time, that when, if we got to the point of the declared state of, of state of emergency ending, that we would work with the business owners to figure out a transition period, and we're not at that time yet.
And I don't think the re, the letters that you're sending out reference that, that as much as it references the state of emergency on June first, and at that particular time, we're gonna be working towards, you need to come back to normalcy. And that sends a message to the business community that if this ends June first, as it has been rumored, at that time, they need to stop everything immediately.
That, that's definitely not the direction I gave.
That's the direction that all of this emails have been interpreted by these folks. And at that particular point, I would like to, with the agreements of the board, state again that we, the board, do not wish to put that burden upon our summertime restaurants or our restaurants. Goes back to what we talked about before. These tourists are the bread and butter of the community, and if they can't make their money now, they can't make their money.
I, I, I do not disagree with you. I, I, I believe we were open to presenting amendments to the regulations to the board. I don't recall the board wanting to do that. The, the regulations indicate that, um, we're able to issue these during a declared state of emergency or owing to the circumstances relating from a declared state of emergency. And I believe the board's discussion back in January and February was whether or not that language gave the mayor latitude to allow those temporary use permits to continue to, continue to be issued. And I'm fairly certain that the board said it was un- uncertain at that time. It would depend on a discussion amongst the board whether or not the circumstances continued to exist to owe to the granting of those. Completely, I don't disagree with you. I'm just making sure we're, I'm happy to do whatever the board wishes us to do.
Well, I, I'll say, and I, you know, I'd, I'd, I'd recall the discussion. I don't know to what extent it's, it's with, with the mayor's authority. Um, to, to the best of my knowledge, you know, we, it's up to the governor when this ends, um, and when we remove our state of emergency. I don't know when that, it's not clear to me exactly when that's gonna happen. Um, and, um, I'd, I'd, having gotten to the season, um, we certainly don't want to disrupt any operations that people have established. Um, and if we need to do that by declaration or modification of ordinance or by the mayor, uh, executing some kind of order, I think we, we would want to make it clear to our business community that, um, yes, this is coming to, to an end, um, and the state of emergency is probably going to be lifted. Uh, but, but whatever you've established legally by permit with the town to this point can remain through, I mean, we could set a day. We can say September thirty or whatever we wanna say.
Season.
I, so I believe, in my opinion, and I think, I, I believe that, that members of the board may have disagreed, and I believe the town attorney may have disagreed. I believe that the language of the UDO allows you that latitude as the mayor, in the, in the existing language that was adopted. I think we can look at the language to confirm whether or not others believe you have that latitude. I believe you do.
Okay, John?
I, I agree. I think you do have that latitude.
Okay.
Under the emergency powers ordinance.
To do what?
To continue the.
Temporary use permit.
Yeah, the temporary, the, 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 uh, exception, or whatever you wanna call it, that allows the temporary use permits for these, these kinds of uses.
Doesn't the statute control that as opposed to the local ordinance?
No, it's, it's something that he's been allowed to, that the mayor has been allowed to approve under the emergency powers ordinance that the town has adopted pursuant to the statute. So I think because of the, because of the town's ordinance confers those powers on the mayor through the emergency powers, I believe he does have the authority to extend that. Now, doesn't preclude the, um.
I can drive.
The board, the board always has the authority to take action as well, because the mayor can act outside of a meeting under the emergency powers ordinance to implement an emergency order or emergency declaration, but the board can always take action to modify that or extend that.
Now, I'm happy if the mayor could. I just thought that the, the statute controlled it beyond what is being said.
Let me, if, if it would help, I, I can bring up the, um, the provisions.
And I'm not talking about the UDO, I'm talking about the statute. I mean, I, I couldn't care less about what the UDO says.
Yes, Commissioner Cahoon.
Mayor, I would encourage you as a member of this board to extend those special provisions that were granted to the, to the restaurant community, business community as part of the emergency order through the end of this season, and typically the end of the season we're gonna say is after Thanksgiving, to Sunday after Thanksgiving. That's when a lot of places close, that's when a lot of things end.
So the provision reads that in the event of an emergency declared by the mayor pursuant to Chapter fourteen, and then the operative pieces or owing to impacts associated with a declared emergency, the mayor may authorize the town manager and UDO administrator jointly, or they're designees, to allow for reasonable temporary accommodations and zoning regulations. So when this was originally adopted, we had the mayor execute a letter to that effect. And I believe based on this language, that the mayor would similarly be able to, eh, from a land use perspective, direct that owing to the impacts, even though the declared state of emergency was now over, that we could still be in a position of issuing, um, these temporary use permits. Because the intent was to think about not just a pandemic, but to think about a hurricane where the declared immediate state of emergency was over, but there may be still reasons for a business or use or property owner to need a temporary use permit. And I think that's exactly what we're talking about here.
Okay.
If Commissioner Cahoon made a motion, I would second it.
Okay.
Well, I may in form of a suggestion, but I will make a moment, make that a motion because.
If, if that, that being the case, um, then, um, I would accept that as a motion, um, from Commissioner Cahoon, accept that as a second from Commissioner Fuller, um, and, and would be happy, and I would ask, um, staff, including John, to prepare that for me, uh, at the earliest opportunity, um, so that we can clarify this for the community.
And notify those people that received, uh, emails and or letters that said, anything that was extended till June first twenty twenty-one, go to the end of the year as part of the motion.
Okay.
Or end of November as part of the motion.
Right, so we, we, we would do that, and we would communicate that to all parties at the.
The, the one trap I don't wanna fall in though is we haven't changed the parking requirement.
Right, that's correct.
So if somebody starts opening up inside dining, they might have to shut down part of their outside dining.
Or vice versa.
Or vice versa. I mean, yeah, I mean, it's just, I'm just making a observation that we haven't changed the parking standard. Some people may start trying to open up a little bit more and get beyond their parking standard.
Beyond that, at the current status with not being able to find employees and to fill a fifty percent occupancy rate in a timely manner at any given ability, I don't see them exceeding.
I don't, I don't see it either, but, but who knows what's gonna happen.
But, but this would be, um, in accord, it would be extended in accordance with the conditions of the temporary permit that they've acquired.
Correct.
And all of those conditions such as they are would apply.
Yeah.
Um, all right, so we have a motion and a second. Um, all of those fa, in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you.
And just since we're on this topic, can we look at, like Commissioner Fuller stated earlier, outdoor seating is allowed in NAC Ed. Can we look at modifications that the staff can recommend to these folks that maybe if they wanna continue outdoor seating, they can?
On a longer term basis?
On a longer term basis, under the correct guidance and the correct, uh, outlined ordinances that are already in place?
Yeah, it, it's my recollection, um, that we had a discussion about that. Um, and it was not, uh, about modifying the ordinance specifically. I, I recall a conversation about, um, an ex, not an expedited.
A, a flexible.
A flexible permit process.
Yeah, so.
That staff would execute.
Yeah, and that's what we came back in January or February to discuss with the board, and I think my memo at that time had, had kinda presented the idea. But basically, we do allow for outdi, outsor, outside dining right now, serviced outside dining. But it, it's, the way it works is you're essentially affecting it on a permanent basis, and to cease doing it, you technically would then have to modify your permit. What we were thinking about doing is creating a, a more flexible option where it could be done periodically or temporarily under certain conditions, and I, and I believe Commissioner Fuller, um, you know, the, when we talked about it in November, I believe, and we came back to talk about the same in, in January, February, wanted there to, to allow it, but not for a reduction in parking, or not with a reduction in parking. So I'm happy to revisit that again, i- if the board wants us to come back with that.
And, and when doing that research, research how much the health department regulates them based on seating as well.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Just to put it succinctly, the argument is on one side, it's only an issue four months out of the year. And on the other side, it's only an issue four months out of the year.
Right. That's right.
That's the argument, on both sides.
That's correct. All right, uh, I think we've covered that issue adequately, so the rest of your.
Yeah, very, I'll try to run through it very quickly. So, um, Kate gave us some update about, uh, the Dune Vegeta, Vegetation Cost Share Program. I think it's going well. I think she would certainly be hopeful there would be more participants. Um, and does believe if, if we were to continue this, um, next fiscal year, that if we were able to start sooner than we were this year, um, you know, hopefully it would allow for planting season of beach grass in, in November. But, um, continued coordination with sand relocation and sand fence installation is also important. So hopefully it's a opportunity that will grow as we continue to, to do this. Presented to you our work plan for next year, really just a, a list form of the major projects and initiatives that we intend to work on, and it also identifies items that we've completed, um, that were previous, uh, on our previous list. Um, Kama Land Use Plan, we had, we've had some good progress meetings with DCM staff, and I believe, um, we'll hope to finalize the revisions that we need to proceed local adoption on May twelfth. Outdoor lighting, I do owe the board information on the, um, LED streetlights that have been converted from, by Dominion so far. I'm still waiting to get specs for those, and then they've also asked about, um, potential locations for doing a trial for the amber lights that they have, um, the spec, the various, um, I think there's four different amber lights that they have. So I wanna give those to them, and also give the board the locations of the other LED lights. And then, once, if they do this, uh, demonstration with the amber lights, I'd also let you know where those are so you can kinda get a, uh, understanding of how those look from an aesthetic standpoint. RFI was released for the town, um, workforce, uh, looking for housing for lifeguards primarily, ideas for that. Did wanna talk about, I think probably the most important thing to talk about is, um, Doughty Park Farmer's Market. And with the governor's executive order regarding, um, no longer required to wear masks outdoors, I wanted to make sure we received the board's input with respect to the expectation for the market at Doughty Park. I think even before this, with, um, the vaccine, vaccines rolling out, I think our expectation was that it would be more difficult this year to enforce masking than it would have been last year. I think, given the executive order, I think it would, um, probably be next to impossible to enforce, um, mask wearing at the park. I think it only invites, um, problems and difficulty, so I, I would just want the board's, um, input. I think the expectation would be from staff that we would not require, uh, masking of people that are attending and likely not require masking of vendors either. And I, I, I fully expect that staff would probably mask, but, um, you know, that we would, being that we would not enforce this, I don't expect we would have, uh, the need for the police presence at the park this year, at the market this year that we had last year either.
Thank you. I, I agree that enforce, you're just gonna get a lot of arguments out there, um, if you, if you list that, uh, lift that. Um, and, um, I, I think communication is important, you know, that, um, perhaps to say while masking is not required.
It's encouraged.
It's encouraged, and, um, that social distancing measures. I, I, I would guess, um, you can clarify this for me, um, what about our standards for spacing vendors and that sort of thing?
Yeah, I think we would continue that. We would continue the sanitation sta, stations. I think we would, while not mandating that vendors masked, we would strongly encourage that they do, and I would expect that some of them will. And, and, um, really continue to, to require and encourage social distancing. And, and really continue to, to require and encourage social distancing. But I think Paige and Kelly certainly did a great job last year of spacing out the vendors. And, you know, we'll have more vendors this year, but I think the, the park is large enough to accommodate that. So I'm, I'm not overly concerned about that issue.
Board, it's my recollection that we imposed that mask date by vote of the board. And so I believe if we want to give staff guidance, we should do that by an action of the board as well. Yes, Mr. Fuller.
One thing on, on here, it says that the Septic Health Strategic Work Plan was attached. I couldn't get it. And I don't know if it was, I saw it down there, but I tried to open it up and I couldn't open it up.
So it's this document, again, it's really an overview and list form of the various projects. So it, it, it is part of the, the document.
Is there any, was there anything we could look at from that?
This is it. This is the.
That's it. That's what, I, I saw all that, but we didn't get any specific narrative.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just, for, for me, that's an extremely important thing. I think the board's prioritized it. And, you know, I, I just kind of like to stay up on what's going on. But that's just me.
Yeah, I, I try to, most of these, if not all of them, most of them are always gonna be spelled out in, in more detail in terms of the status and any, you know, benchmarks in this report. Almost all of those activities are some related.
It's near the top.
Yeah. So they're gonna be always spelled out in my director's report. Those are the projects that I generally am, am gonna focus on in my reports.
Michael, who's doing our Septic Health inspections?
So we have our inspectors that have always been engaged, Kevin Carver and the other, David Swinney. And then Kylie Shepherd, who we hired as an environmental planner last year. She had been unable to take her certification class because of the pandemic until tomorrow and Friday. So she's actually leaving for Raleigh at noon to go to her certification test. So the bulk of the inspections are done by our private contractors. And that's a line item in our budget for $10,000 for those two contractors. And now that Kylie's able to get her certification, she'll be able to supplement that as well.
Thank you. Board members, any, any other questions on things that we've seen so far? And Michael, I asked to you, we sort of interrupted you in the Doughty discussion. Anything else you need to highlight for us?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Well, I do want to mention the, the E-Tip program, the E-Tip program that we were accepted into with the Department of Energy is, I think, hopefully you all seen the news about that. And we certainly included something in the work plan. We have a scoping, or not in the work plan, but in the newsletter, we have a scoping meeting with them tomorrow to talk about what that project is gonna entail, what we hope to accomplish as part of that. The scoping, I, I think is expected to take a couple of months. And then the technical assistance piece of that will start in, in July, I believe. So the focus again is, you know, how can we leverage renewables to make the community more resilient, but also our facilities more resilient? And I expect, you know, we'll be engaging with stakeholders and really depending on a lot of participation from Dominion as well.
All right. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. So before we, before we leave that, I do want a motion and action on the mask requirement for Doughty Park.
If I understand you correctly, I would make a motion that we remove the requirement of masks being worn at the Doughty Park Farmer's Market of those attending and the vendors.
Yes.
And change that, that it is encouraged, but not required.
Yes. Thank you.
Can we use the same wording that the governor used? I'm just asking.
That would be great.
I mean, can we put it in that format?
Well, and in compliance with the governor's.
In compliance with the governor's orders.
Yes. Kevin, you accept that as an amendment to your.
Thank you.
Motion? Thank you.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ales in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Before we go to, Michael, you're still up for the next item, but we're gonna take a five-minute recess. From its break, the next item on our agenda is item H1, which is a continuous, continuance, or continued from the April 7 board meeting where we had a public hearing on text amendments to the UDO for lighting. Michael?
Thank you. So I won't go over the entirety of the text amendment. Just focus on the board's direction at the last meeting, which was, the board wanted us to provide additional language that would not preclude the uplighting of residential neighborhood freestanding signs, if not also commercial freestanding signs. So I've modified the language in the adoption ordinance. Let me get to that section. So this would affect the amendment of Section 10 dot 37 dot 6 dot 2. It would still require that wall signs, it would still, excuse me, it still would require that lights utilized to externally illuminate wall and freestanding signs, provided that the light fixtures are full cutoff and designed, located, aimed and shielded so that the light is directed only onto the sign area. Requires externally illuminated wall signs to be downlit, but indicates that light fixtures used to eliminate externally illuminated freestanding signs from the ground shall not be mounted to a height greater than 30 inches or located a horizontal distance from the sign greater than three quarters the height of the sign or 15 feet, whichever is less. So those provisions don't change. It gives people the option to continue to light freestanding signs from the ground and maintains the same regulations about the height of that light fixture and the distance of the fixture from the sign face. So I believe that was consistent with the board's request.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. In my reading, it, it seemed to do what the board had asked to do. So I'll ask Commissioners, Commissioner Sears?
I have nothing on this. Good work, Michael. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Cahoon.
Absolutely fine with this. Thank you.
Mr. Brickley.
Thank you for making the, the changes as we asked for.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fuller.
A silly question. How do you reverse light a roof sign?
You could. It, it would be, it would involve the, whether the face is opaque. And it would have a, a back that would allow for the light to reflect out around, around and create a halo effect. We could do that. I've not seen, and I don't believe we actually have in the community, any internally illuminated roof signs. And that would be the start. You would basically, if you add an internally illuminated roof sign and that's technically feasible, then you could similarly make it a reverse lit roof sign.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? If not, a motion would be in order?
Make a motion that Section 10 point 37 point 6 point 2 be amended as presented today. Is that the correct motion?
Yes.
Second.
It would actually be adoption of the, of the ordinance as presented to the board.
Okay.
Which includes that modification.
So moved.
And the second. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Thank you, Michael. Appreciate that. The next item on our agenda is item H2, in consideration of traffic control map amendments. Andy?
So last month, the board discussed the recommendations from the Jockeys Ridge Working Group. One of the recommendations was to include amendments to the traffic control map for no parking zones and a three-way stop at the entrance to the state park, beach access. We have prepared an ordinance and a map amendment which would do that. Essentially establishes or extends a no parking towway zone further west on Soundside Road, all the way back to 158. And then further to the south, or further east on 150, Soundside Road. And then to the south, where Soundside Road would turn past 13th Street. The map amendment would also include 13th Street and Deering Street. And these were the recommendations of the, the working group. And then you also have the three-way stop at the entrance. If this is adopted, staff will be working to, to develop a sign placement plan. We do have an administrative policy on placement of no parking signs. We had a meeting about it two weeks ago. And our new Public Works Director, who is, has a background in traffic engineering, we've asked him to look at the placement of these signs and also our administrative policy. The administrative policy talks about placement of no parking signs every 200 feet. It's pretty specific. And just wanted to get his thoughts on that. Concerns would be whether or not that's overkill for this distance, given the, the straightness of the road and the length. So it's something we'll be working on, but we're prepared to do that. And that's the amendment we have before you today.
All right. Thank you. Board members, any questions? I believe it's time to start with Commissioner Fuller this time.
Just, and understand this, from the working group, was there any discussion about taking it further east and west on Soundside Road? Because we're only taking it to the turn and not all the way to the end. And at the end, if I'm not mistaken, there is a cul-de-sac there that doesn't have any parking signs. So people can park in that cul-de-sac, I would assume.
I believe we discussed that the last meeting with, that we were doing that and deering, and the no parking signs.
That you were gonna do it?
All of Soundside and Deering.
Okay. Well, this doesn't show that. Okay. But this doesn't show. This only shows and says we're only taking it to the curve at Soundside Road, not all the way around to the end of Soundside Road.
Okay. The desire is to do all the way to the end of Soundside Road to the cul-de-sac. I mean, on, on the entire.
I want to make sure what the, what the group wanted.
Is that section of Soundside Road that Joel owns, is that private?
Uh, no.
Didn't he give a right of way through there on his property?
There.
There's an easement.
There's an easement.
There, actually at the end in front of the Oak Smith House is a cul-de-sac area. That, and that road is, it's one of the old Naxhead roads that has been in existence for a number of years. Actually, if you actually look at where the right of way is, the road is partially in the right of way and partially on private property. And houses are partially on the road, I mean, partially in the right of way from where the road is. But I, I mean, I'm fine if that's where everybody wants to end it, right there. But I would have thought that people would have wanted it to go down to the end of Naxhead Wood Road. Excuse me, not, I mean, Soundside Road.
Yes, Andy.
Well, Planning, Planning Director Zainer just pointed out that there's a portion of this that he believes is private.
That's what?
Is private.
No.
No.
That's not true.
So the leg of it here is private based on, and I'm trying to think of the subdivision that was processed along here. And then this section is not actually right of way, but an easement. It is absolutely correct that the cul-de-sac at the end is public. But there's a section through, obviously here, that's an easement only. And I don't know what the easement stipulates about parking restrictions. That may be important to know. And then this section here has never been improved to a state to be dedicated to the town. There was a subdivision that approved waivers for that to occur, but the work's never taken place.
If I'm not mistaken, I, I, I think you're exactly right of the, okay, going from the cul-de-sac, the cul-de-sac's public.
Correct.
I think that's not a question.
Yes, sir. Correct.
And going from the cul-de-sac north is an easement. I think you're exactly right. But I disagree from going east to west. That section, I think there is a dedicated easement that the town has. However, some of the houses on that road are actually sitting in the, in the easement. And the road is actually on other people's property.
Right. And, and I think the question is, maybe to the town attorney, is can we establish traffic controls on an easement versus a, a public dedicated right of way?
And, and I'll, I'll add, because regardless, a tourist looking for a place to park isn't gonna care or be able to tell whether something is a easement or private road or anything else. And if we have the capability to establish parking, should we? But, but, so if we, I will, I will say from my judgment, if we have the capability to establish parking control, we should. But then the question goes back to, do we have the capability to do that?
My, I haven't researched this, but my impression is that you can impose parking restrictions anywhere you want to through, through zoning, anywhere the town wants to. And that would include along an easement used for access purposes. If the town does not have the right to use that easement as an easement holder, then that doesn't allow you to use it, but you can still impose use restrictions on the property. That would be my, that would, that would be my impression.
All right. Thank you.
And then, and then just one other thing I want to mention is, I think I had asked earlier, it doesn't pertain to this per se, but I had asked earlier about what's the position of the Friends of Jockeys Ridge? And my understanding was that they don't exist anymore. And my research has found out that not only do they exist, but they're very active and they're in the middle of a fundraising campaign right now. So I just want to make sure that people do know that the Friends of Jockeys Ridge do exist.
Okay.
And I, I'd like their input when we do things personally.
Thank you. Mr. Brickley.
I was happy to hear that, you know, as far as the, the policies in regards to placement of regulatory signs and the fact that our new Public Works Director has a background in traffic engineering, I'd also like to recommend, and I'm sure he is fully aware of it, the manual and uniform traffic control devices, that we also consider that when, when they do offer some guidance.
Sure.
And the fact that, in my opinion and experience, if this is gonna be successful, they need to be, needs to be readily apparent that those, that is, that it is a no parking area. If not, you're putting, in my opinion, the law enforcement officers in a great deal of, it's gonna be confrontations because, well, I can't see the sign, or I didn't see it.
Right.
I'm not saying that we litter the roadway with no parking signs, but I just hope that we park it in a way.
Right.
And that, you know, no parking sign is no parking sign, period. And I want to make sure that that's, that's clear, that, that doesn't mean, well, you can park here, you can't. You're visiting the park, you can't park there. It means nobody. And again, I thank the working group that came up with these suggestions and also town staff's time as well.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, we had a discussion last week, and that point was brought up about, you know, in order to enforce the no parking signs, you have, a reasonable person has to have seen the sign. And so there needs to be, that needs to be taken into consideration. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Cahoon.
No, I thank the working group very much. And I would also hope everybody realizes that by the adoption, possible adoption of these three-way stop signs and no parking signs, that it applies to everyone equally. It doesn't apply to residents versus non-residents. It applies equally. And also, it is incumbent upon now the police department to enforce the no parking. And by enforcement, enforce it.
Commissioner Sears?
I would echo everything everybody said. I do have a question for Mr. Fuller. Without the Friends of Jockeys Ridge's participation, are you open for a motion on this today?
I, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, I just would prefer if we are discussing things about Jockeys Ridge, that they be an actor participant in Jockeys Ridge.
Maybe we should reach out to the Friends of Jockeys Ridge because there is a, a. request by the committee to have a working relationship with Jockeys Ridge and the town, and maybe they could be part of that working relationship.
And, and actually, that's part of what it was. The town manager and was on that working group, as well as other town officials were meeting with the Friends Group. And the Friends Group was basically neighbors of the park. And then there were other people that were involved, but it was a lot of people on the north side and south side made up a lot of the Friends, and, you know, I, I actually, when I asked the question, I actually had thought it had disbanded, and over afterwards, I found out, no, not only is it not disbanded, it's in fact in a, a money-raising process right now. Thank you.
So, having seen this and heard from staff, somebody willing to put a motion on the floor to either adopt this or modify it?
I will make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
So, you're not proposing to put any no parking signs on the easement?
Not at this time. I think that needs to, I would like to see what the working group says.
Thank you.
I mean, I'm, I'm trying to say that I agree with what the working group's done, and think it's a good job, and if there's any further issues, we can address those at that time.
All right, thank you. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you.
Hearing none. Thank you, Andy, I appreciate that. So, board, it is 11:54. The town attorney has indicated that there are quite a few items to discuss in the closed session that he has requested, and we still have the presentation of the fiscal year 21-22 budget, in addition to consideration of the amendment to the board policy on vehicle use. It being that close to 12 o'clock, would the board be in favor of a, of a lunch recess and come back in an hour and 15 minutes this time? All right. Seeing head nods in that regard, then the board will be in recess until, be a little more than that, until 1:15.
Voted to do it, and the county commissioners authorized it.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you, I appreciate that. The next item on our agenda would be item J, the town attorney, and John, I assume we can do this after the budget presentation?
Uh, yes, sir, we certainly can. I'd say we put it near the end of the agenda would be fine.
Okay, all right, thank you. Then that would bring us to items referred to in presentations from the town manager, and Greg, that brings us to you.
Very good, thank you, Mayor. Commission? I guess, first, maybe start off by just saying kind of a thank you to the elected officials as we present this budget. It was still being worked on pretty fast and furiously yesterday, and it's intended to be your budget. It represents the priorities that you've established for Nag's Head. The town manager transmittal letter certainly provides a comprehensive summary of some of the changes from current fiscal year to the next fiscal year, lays out certainly in graph form, as well as a lot of verbiage in terms of some of the proposed primary policy issues with it, within the budget. So, that's a good place for, for going to, for, for information within the budget document. So, talk a little bit about the general fund, some of the main points. This next fiscal year budget, we've proposed $25,748,146 in general fund expenditures, which is nearly 17.6% above the current year. So, a pretty substantial increase. And it's really based upon, certainly an increase in revenues, on, on the revenue side, in occupancy of 32%, sales tax 19%, land transfer 105%. This budget proposes a one-cent tax increase, which generates about $308,431, so with a total levy of $8,481,860. There's no change in the beach nourishment capital reserve, but certainly one of the things is we'll, we'll wanna talk about with the board next week in the study session is, is about certainly the MSDs and, and whether, in terms of setting the tax rate for the MSDs. The, for 2022, there's, planning has been underway for some time on the nearly $14 million project, our beach nourishment project as a result of, from Hurricane Dorian, which is primarily grant-funded. And to achieve a balanced budget, besides what we've proposed in that one-cent tax increase, is also to appropriate three, appropriate $350,000 from fund balance. We continue to have a strong fund balance position. In terms of personnel, as the board's aware, we have a pay-in-class study that's currently underway. We'll see some of the initial results on that draft by the end of this week. Then that'll actually give us opportunity from administrative staff to provide input, get back to the consultant. And we're also, I think, in terms of getting that out and getting input from the board, I think there'll be some decisions made there as to how the board wants to receive that information, and whether or not any individual-type meetings with, with board members, or, or however you wanna structure that. There's also 1.4% COLA that's built in, and, and the within-grade increases. Board previously approved an increase in hourly rates for lifeguards to $15 an hour as a starting, and an increase in the housing stipend. So, we, so at this point, not knowing what the results are gonna be from that, the comp and class study, we have reserved some funds, so if there's some flexibility for the board in terms of how that, how that study may be implemented, whether it's phased, at this point, until we see what the numbers are, it's, it's hard to know what to recommend to the board. There are two new positions that are recommended in this budget, both in Public Works, kind of a building grounds parks position and a facilities maintenance position. That's where we certainly have seen kind of the growth in terms of adding additional facilities, whether it's the multi-year, multipurpose path, and, and so there are things that have been added in recent years, Doughty Park, and we'll, we can certainly have a lot of discussion with the board on that during the budget work session. There are, there's also funding in place for security retrofits, since we're kind of phase one on security retrofits. Streets and stormwater capital reserve fund, there's $625,000 to that fund, along with approximately $710,000 carried over from prior fiscal years. So, that is a change. Public beach access, certainly the board has prioritized that throughout the years. I think that's certainly a thing that sets Nag's, Nag's Head apart from many of the other communities here on the Outer Banks. Hereon and Bainbridge walkover replacement with grant funds from Tourist Bureau, as well as Epstein Street Bath House, and sidewalk extensions at Monnet and Barnes are also included in this budget, and depend upon a level of grant funding. We're currently underway with the master plan for Public Works facilities, and that, that work is continuing, and we've, we've reserved some funds for additional study there. Again, we'll be, we'll be coming back to the board with a report on that in the near future. Terms of the water fund, we've recommended a 5% rate increase. That generates about $170,000 a year. We're also utilizing retained earnings of over $490,000, and utilizing $870,000 from American Rescue Funds into the water fund. That's what really has helped, we, going into this budget, we thought we'd be at a much higher than a 5% rate increase, but the American Rescue Funds have really helped to keep that rate increase down. The, the major capital improvement project in the water fund is $1,750,930 to replace asbestos water line and a portion of old Nag's Head Cove, so that is the main capital So, the water fund budget of $5,149,173 is an increase of nearly $1.7 million, about 49% from the current year, and again, that's really related to this large capital project and other future capital projects, as well as we, with the water system. Commission, commission previously approved a 10-year tank and tower maintenance contract, which is ongoing. So, those are really some of the highlights in this budget, I think, in terms of the proposed one-cent tax increase, 5% on the water fund, number of projects that are outlined within the budget document. I certainly put out a, a thanks to all departments for the work they did on preparing this budget, and certainly from the finance department, and all of Amy's work in terms of pulling this all together, in terms of the revenue projections, and really scrutinizing, kind of in a sense, where we were to, to make sure that we had a budget that's both fiscally responsible, maintains services, is proactive in addressing streets, stormwater, and water, and really believe this budget accomplishes that. So, we look forward to next week's budget meeting to go over this draft budget in more detail, and then for the public hearing that's scheduled on June 2nd, which the board previously approved in the consent agenda. That concludes my remarks, Mayor.
Thank you. Board members, you've just gotten this, but any immediate questions for manager?
Just one quickly, did you, you said two employees in Public Works?
Yes.
Does the written document support two, or does it just say one?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, so it's, it's one and one?
Okay, so, so, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, got it. So, it is one?
Yes, one and first year.
Right, okay.
Greg, if you received any information about our study, employment study?
The, I'm sorry, the employee study? I tell ya, I have not seen any numbers yet. We're supposed to get the draft on this Friday, so, at this point, we've all had, we've provided feedback to them. They, they're looking at certain positions, knowing that some need some level of reclassification, and then certainly looking at how we compare with other communities and from a competitive standpoint, but I, I have not seen any numbers.
We had that by our meeting, our mid-month?
I think that the plan is, depend upon how much input we have back to them as staff, the idea was really to have this presented at the, at the June meeting, because really your next two meetings are all budget-related.
Yeah, I feel this would be, I know you put money in it for that, but at the same time, we're talking about adding positions, that study may say that we can reposition positions that would not need to add a position. So, anything that you can give us that would better be factual for the board, we can have, we can have.
Okay.
Question for you, Greg, as a follow-up on that, as it relates to talking about our June meeting, at some point, what anticipated date are you expecting us to adopt this?
Adopt the budget?
No, adopt the pay-in-class study.
It's, it's just been a little hard to make the prediction on that, but, you know, we would've loved to have gotten that, that study completed just a little bit earlier ahead of the budget, because the budget's, is, is ahead of the, ahead of that class study. So, I'll feel more comfortable talking about it at next week's meeting, once I see the initial plan.
Okay. And if I recall, the last pay-in-class study, they also met with commissioners, or we had a meeting about it, or whatever, in an informal setting. Can we at least have some sort of meeting about the pay-in-class, rather than a board meeting and a work session or something?
Yeah, I think that's certainly up to the board, how you want to accomplish that.
We would like to have, be able to discuss it and have input as well, because we may have observations that are germane to that pay-in-class study.
Sure.
One question.
Yes, absolutely.
The 1.4 COLA that you have proposed, where did you come up with that amount, please?
Maybe I'll come back to Amy for that.
It's the January.
It's the January CPI. It wasn't in there, sorry.
I'm sorry, good afternoon. It's the January Consumer Price Index, which we use every year to have a consistent, just so we're not kind of picking the highest or the lowest. So, we've, the past several years, we've kind of used the January CPI as our benchmark.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dane, our dates for the workshops?
Yes, budget workshops are next week, May 12th, and then also scheduled for May 19th, as necessary.
At 9:00?
Yes.
9:00, yes.
Would you like to schedule around your day off?
Yes, nice, and everybody schedules around their day off.
Or, just a question about the budget workshops. Are, are we gonna have a structured process, or is it gonna be all over the place? I prefer it be structured, personally.
So would I.
I mean, in other words, like, are we gonna go through departments, or are we just gonna come in here and say, okay, let's start down there with Mr. Sears, what are your questions, or, I mean, just how, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not suggesting anything other than, I think it should be somewhat structured, one way or another.
Yes.
I was gonna say, typically the way I've had these structured in the past, and of course, every city does a little different, but starting off with finance, going over the revenue projections, and then going through department, departmental budgets, and having the department directors there to answer, both to make a, in a sense, kind of a short presentation, and then to answer your specific questions on their, on their budgets.
That sounds good.
That's, yeah, sounds good.
Any other questions or comments for Greg? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And, and while you're, you're on, then item K2, amendment to the board policy on vehicle use.
Yes. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, we have, we have both the board policy and two different administrative policies here, and kind of as I summarize in the report, you know, the, the board and administrative staff, really in the last couple of months, have really been aware that there have been changes made at the administrative level over time, going back a number of years, that resulted in a lack of conformity between the administrative policies and the board policy, in regard to the use of, of town vehicles, and particularly for, from a take-home vehicle standpoint. So, to remedy those conflicts, it's recommended the board policy be amended to include language that specifies use of vehicles, and I'll kind of go into that, as well as then these two administrative policies making some changes. Some cases, it's, it's updating language of, on positions. In some cases, it's, it's updating language of, on positions. The, so those two administrative policies are attached for your, for your review. The one is on the assignment, assignment of town vehicles, it's been amended to reflect the take-home use to Currituck County with a maximum of 30 miles one-way, and that would be from the northern city or town limits to that destination, and specifies that vehicles may not go south of the Mark Bassinite Bridge. It updates the language on which employees are allowed to take home vehicles, and it grandfathers the use of a sanitation employee who lives in Plymouth, who has continued the use of a vehicle, even, because at one time, it was also an employee who lived in Columbia, and they left the vehicle there, and this person went on to Plymouth, but at some point, several years ago, that person was allowed to, to take the vehicle to Plymouth. But with the idea that that use would discontinue when that employee retires or leaves town employment. There's also the take-home vehicle policy that applies only to the police department. It did amends the mileage limit for take-home vehicles from 20 to 30 miles, and has a strikeout underlined versions, and, and first, let me talk a little bit more about the, the board policy. I did note one thing that was inaccurate in the changes here, and that's right up front, where it says vehicle use policy and the adoption dates. It shows it as being updated February 3rd, 2021. I think that's actually a date when we were, had an, an initial draft, when we first started looking at it. So that's, it was not updated on February 3rd. So this is the updated version of May 5th, and the, and the portion in red is the new language. It's down on the second page at the bottom, assigned vehicles and vehicle use. I'll just read that. Town manager may assign vehicles to employees for commuting purposes when there is an interest of the town to do so for purposes of improved response time, preparedness, and then the word "and," on-call status, crossed out the et cetera, so there's no, it said, ambiguity about what that might mean. And then new language, additionally, town vehicles may be in use, may be used for employee carpooling to promote energy conservation and efficiency. Take-home vehicles may be approved to address housing availability for employees within the mileage standards established by the town manager and approved by the Board of Commissioners. And then administrative policy will address those assignments. So, so that's the strikeout underlined version, there's the clean copy. And then on the administrative policy, assignment of town vehicles, the new language under number one relating to town sanitation employees specifies then living in Currituck County to ensure dependable transportation to work, continued use of a current sanitation employee driving to and from Plymouth, but to discontinue if that employee leaves town employment. Number three is new language, allowing police officers living in Currituck County to use a town vehicle to drive to and from work up to 30 miles from town limits, parentheses "one-way." And then number five is new language, town vehicles are not allowed to drive south of Mark Bassinite Bridge due to proliferation of salt water on the roadways. And then under the positions authorized under public works, it, it currently don't have a deputy public works director, public facilities maintenance supervisor, sanitation supervisor, those have been crossed out to show facility sanitation superintendent, even though that position does not currently take a vehicle home. Under public safety, crosses out public safety director, and puts in police chief, as well as in further down, fire, has a fire chief, as well as deputy police chief, police officers living in Dare County and Currituck County. And again, that 30 miles would, and the other policy would, would dictate distance. Deputy fire chief rather than assistant, crosses out fire marshal, and includes senior fire captain in the absence of the fire chief and deputy fire chief. And then the administrative policy on assignment of town vehicles that relates, I'm sorry, take, I'm sorry, the take-home vehicle policy, which refers only to Nags Head Police Department. The new language crosses out the 20 miles, replaces with 30, really crosses out the language dealt, dealing with him when employees were hired between certain dates, and, and then finishes with this policy shall conform with the Board of Commissioners' vehicle use policy as amended, and administrative policy, assignment of town vehicles as amended. So tried to clean up the language on the two administrative policies, and the recommended change with the board policy, to really try to, I think, meet the issues that the board has raised in the last, oh, probably month or two now, so. And I, I think, as I noted in a previous report to the board, the police department had, had, had at one point, with the approval of the previous town manager, had, had allowed vehicles to go to Columbia, and we had discontinued that practice about a month ago. With that, I answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you. Board members, I'll start it, this and Commissioner Fuller.
Two questions. Did you say 17 and 1/2% increase?
On the budget?
Yeah, still.
Yes.
That's where I still am. Um, no, the, the, I, this, this is a real question. When you say 30 miles, are you talking about 30 drivable miles?
Yes, it is, it is not a radius.
Okay, thank you.
And we did have those kind of exact mileage, and we made sure that that number stayed under that. Yeah.
Okay. We should break.
To clarify something, I believe your last statement was that under the previous town manager, the officers were allowed to take their cars to Columbia.
Yes.
That was done under the previous town manager.
Yeah.
The second thing is, between the take-home vehicle policy and the admin policy, for the take-home vehicles, vehicle policy for the police department, it states that officers living outside of Nags Head must leave their vehicle at town hall or town property if they're out on extended medical leave or on vacation, unless prior approval has been given by the police chief. The admin policy states that any employee with an assigned vehicle must leave it on town property. So it contradicts itself just a little bit versus somebody living in the town of Nags Head, as far as the police department goes. And I hope that that practice does continue, that if officers are out, that it, vehicle is not kept out of town, but kept on town property, that we can easily access it in the case of need.
Yeah. We'll address that.
And I appreciate your work on cleaning everything up. Thank you.
Commissioner Cahoon?
No, I'm just shocked that we have a car going to Plymouth every day. I'm just shocked. That's not something the board was ever made aware of.
Yeah.
Nothing for me. Thank you for your work.
Yeah, I want to say also thank you for cleaning, cleaning this up as much as you were able to.
It is much better.
Appreciate that.
I agree, it's much better.
So I think what I recommend is that the board adopt the board policy, and then also maybe a motion that says that the two administrative policies conform with the board policy.
Is that meet you, that meet with you? Yeah, yeah. Subject to amendments made on the floor.
Deputy manager garment, that, that actually, that that actually should be, our two employees live in Elizabeth City and Pascatank County, and not, and not, so I think, I think we would want to, under this administrative policy, I think we could just add, add in, living in, quite frankly, could be Currituck, Currituck County and Pascatank County, because it'll still fall within that.
Yeah, we have two sanitation people that live in Elizabeth City, I believe.
And their carpooling.
Correct.
So you mentioned amendments from the floor.
What Commissioner Brinkley brought up, that there was a disconnect between two things.
So, so that, that...
Just so that can be clarified, because they're, they're, a little, I just think that needs to be clarified somewhat.
I think, I think as part of the administrative policy, we can, we can do that. I think it's to make sure from the board's standpoint that you're, you're, that it then complies with your board policy.
Thank you.
So, let's do this as, let's do this as two motions. Let's approve the board policy, and then let's find that with adjustments for consistency, that the administrative policies comply with the board policy.
I make a motion that we approve the take, the Board of Commissioners' take-home vehicle policy.
Okay. I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Commissioner Fuller?
I don't think the board needs to take an action on the administrative policy.
I wouldn't have him spend the straight...
I know, but I mean, I thought we would take them as two different things, but, I'm just saying, we don't need to do anything with administrative policy.
I, I think my only point was just trying to make sure that the board confirmed that they, as written, that they conform with your policy, if you, or, or you can do that by consensus as well, so. If you're comfortable that, I think there just needs to be some record that...
As, as of today?
Yes.
That they are not inconsistent with board policy.
Yeah, but, I mean, if, if we approve it, I mean, I guess where I'm coming from, if we approve it, then we've approved something that could be changed on us, and we don't know anything about.
Right.
And then it gets, sort of gets confusing, because, well, the board approved it, but then a week from now, it could be changed, and we don't know it. Well, how do you go back, you know, I mean, I'm, I, I think administrative policy should be left to the administrative unit, unless we say, unless we do what you say, as of today, what we saw is consistent.
Yes, I, and, and we can, I think we can do that by acclamation, Greg. It'll be in the record. I, I agree, I don't think we want to start taking actions on administrative policies. And if we do it one time, then it makes it an oddball item that has a history, you know, when, when the next manager comes along and looks at that. So I, I, I would, I would say, is it the, is it the board's consensus that as of today, the administrative policies that were presented to us are consistent with the board policy that we just approved? And, and hearing no, hearing no disagreement with that, then they, they are. And, and again, thank, I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, Renee's...
We've got us all off track, so we didn't vote on the pre...
Renee's reminding us that we have a, a, a motion and a second to approve the board policy, and I believe we were in discussion when we got off track. So having had that discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
My apologies.
No, that's all right. Appreciate that. What, what I would suggest at, at this point, is that we go to closed session and deal with the attorney's items. That'll leave anything that the Board of Commissioners want to bring up, or the mayor after the closed session, and we, we may have items to report out of the closed session.
And action to take.
And an action to be taken, so it would seem appropriate to leave a little room there.
I agree.
So a motion to enter into, into closed session for one or more personnel matters, and to, well, I'll just make the motion, that we go in closed session for one or more personnel matters, and to discuss a matter within the attorney-client privilege, including but not limited to the Richardson and other pending town condemnation cases pursuant to General Statute 143, 318.11A3 and 6.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Board has returned to open session. I'll ask Mr. Leidy to report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The board did confer with the town attorney regarding matters within the attorney-client privilege, including some litigation matters. Some actions were taken, but nothing else has to be reported at this time.
Okay, thank you. There is a personnel matter that we need to take action on that was discussed in closed session, and a motion would be in order to retain Michael Silverman as our next town manager effective July 1, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and that's subject to the contract terms that were presented to us in closed session.
That's correct.
I need to add, add that information as well. Any discussion? Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. And if I am correct, we deferred any discussion of additional interims till a future date.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda then would be the Board of Commissioners' agenda, and I'll ask commissioners if they have anything else further to bring forward. Commissioner Fuller?
Can't think right now, so, no.
Okay. Commissioner Brinkley? Commissioner Cahoon?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Nothing at this time, sir.
Thank you very much. Likewise, the mayor has nothing else at this point to bring forward. The mayor's tired, ready to go home.
Go to work.
It's what?
Go to work.
So then, is there other business, Mr. Manager? Are you aware of anything else to bring forward to the board?
No, Mayor.
Okay, all right, thank you. Then we will adjourn.
Motion to recess to next week's budget workshop.
Yes, and I need...
Second.
I have a motion and a second to recess to that workshop. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you very much.